Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May tenth, twenty twenty one Planning Board Meeting. As we always do, as we first please stand for a pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands. One nation. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I did want to first just announce that we did get resignation letter from John Kincart. John Kincart has been on the board for ten years. I've had the honor and privilege of knowing the man for the last ten years and working with him on this board. I can't say enough good things about him and the contributions he made to this group and the town. I think we were all better as a town and a board for having him on it. And he will be missed. And now we have, obviously Roxanne Viscotti was our acting or our sub. I'm assuming soon enough for to put her on. I don't know if anybody else has anything to add?
You know, Rich, I'd like to add something just real quick. I mean, exactly what you said, I'd like to thank John for his years, years of service. And his, his knowledge, his perspective, his approach. As you know, as I like to say, every project needs to be looked at on its own merits and so forth. So, but his knowledge of the market and understanding of the implications and so forth and sensitivity to the applicants, I think, is phenomenal. So he will be missed for sure.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we're going to move on to the fun portion, correspondence. We got, did get some late breaking. Robin's added it to the Dropbox. I don't know if anybody's had the chance to take a look at it. Anybody have anything they want to discuss in that? And the meeting minutes, what are we going to do without the professor? Nancy, I'm sorry. We're not as gifted with the English language. Does anybody have any issues? Did everybody have the chance to review? If there's no issues, do I have a motion to approve the April twenty sixth, twenty twenty one meeting minutes?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we got a motion by Lascala. A second by Viscotti. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we're going to move into the regular session of our meeting. First on the agenda, we have the Fusco Minor subdivision. This is a request for reapproval. Location is three, four, seven, seven Stony Street. We have the applicant on.
Yes, I'm here.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. So you're acting upon, with yourself? No, okay. So I'll read the, the letter in. May fifth, twenty twenty one. The Planning Board at its May twentieth, two thousand nineteen meeting adopted resolution nineteen dash eleven, approving the Fusco subdivision. The Planning Board at their May eleventh, twenty twenty meeting reapproved the subdivision and subsequently granted two ninety-eight time extensions. The conditions set forth in the approving resolution have not been satisfied. Therefore, I'm respectfully requesting a reapproval of the subdivision. I reside on the property and have not made any changes to the property. Existing residents on the property still being utilized as a single family home. There should be no additional analysis pursuant to seeker required at this time. John, any issues?
Sorry about that. We, we have no, we have no issues.
Jim?
Nothing for me.
Any members of the board, any questions?
No. Nope, not him.
Okay, so we have the resolution on page nineteen? So do I have a motion to grant the request for reapproval for the Fusco Minor subdivision?
Motion.
First by Bach, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Garrigan, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
You have a good night. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have Village Traditions. This is another request, request for reapproval. Locations, one, eight, two, one, East Main Street. We have the applicant on. Robin, do you see him here?
Yes, I did.
I see him. I think.
His mic is off.
Mr. Mallon, are you there?
There he is.
There he is.
There you are, unmute.
Yes.
How are you? You're on.
Good, thank you.
So you're requesting a reapproval. You're also acting in your own place?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna go to the letter again. We have a letter June eleventh. Village Traditions LLC requests a reapproval. Resolution eighteen dash oh five dated May twenty first, two thousand eighteen. For amended site plan located at eighteen, twenty one, East Main Street in Mohegan Lake. During the review process, the original site plan approval and amended site plan approval. The project impacts were addressed or assessed. Each potential impact was carefully studied, including traffic impacts, impacts due to stormwater runoff, wetland buffer impacts, impacts to community and other important impacts. Addition, all trees over eight inches DBH were identified on the site. And a landscape plan, including planting of trees was included in the science site plan set. During the process of review, it was determined that the project, as presented, would not have any negative impact. If implemented as approved subsequent to the approval granted for this project, there have been no changes in laws, regulations, rules of any jurisdictions involved in the process that would change the board's determination. John, any issues?
We have no issues.
Jim?
Nothing for me.
Any questions or comments from the board?
None.
All right, that being said, do I have a motion for the request for the reapproval of Village Traditions?
Motion.
We have a first by Bach, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lascala, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. It was very nice to see you, Mr. and Mrs. Mallon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Bless you, have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Take care, be safe, be well.
You too.
Okay, next we got the Albert French subdivision. This is a decision statement. Location is seventeen sixty-two French Hill Road. We have Joe Rena.
Hello, everyone.
How are you, sir?
Okay. After the last meeting, I prepared changes to the plan. Also, there was a question about if the two lots to the rear needed to gain access. What would, what would, sorry, off their individual frontages, what would the driveway configuration be on that? And I'm just going to show you what we came up with. Okay, so this is, let me bring up the other sheet so you can put, I can put this in context. So this is, this is this, we're talking about this area right here where the existing driveway currently goes to an easement and serves the two properties to the rear. And this would be the alternate driveway. If it were to come off the frontage that was approved as part of that subdivision or the creation of those two lots. So going to the more detailed view. Again, this is that alternate driveway coming off the frontage granted for those two lots in, in the original approval. So coming off of that with, with a driveway that is, meets the town regulations at three percent, at thirty feet and ten percent. After that, it is doable, will require an extensive amount of fill, but it, it can be done. However, we believe the existing driveway is probably a safer bet all around, especially if an emergency vehicle needs to get in there. They can come straight in at a gradual grade rather than coming down off of this. So we would suggest that we that, that existing driveway be the main, main approach for those two lots. The other thing we we asked to address was showing the side yard setback for this cottage here to try to alleviate some of this irregularity in the property line. And we're showing seventeen point four feet where ten feet is required. And what this, and, and in retrospect, this was done, number one, to maintain the existing walk and steps on this lot here, so we kind of jagged in here. And then this flatter area of the property is more more accessible and more to be enjoyed by the cottage than it would be for this house if we set the, if we set the property line at ten feet, which would be about, about here. So this benefits more of the cottage versus the, the house on this site. So that's, that's why we, we're a little more generous with that side lot line there. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions from the board? John, anything to add?
No, I appreciate, I appreciate what Joe did to further clarify the conditions. In the resolution, I would make a suggestion that there's a resolved on page three that says, resolved, the Planning Board finds a relocation of the existing driveway to lot nine would require significant construction that isn't necessary. I would change that to say require significant grading and fill that isn't necessary, rather than significant construction, just to be more clear on it. And with that, I have no further comments.
Okay, Jim?
No, I, I think John just made an excellent point. That would be the only thing that I would say. I, I think Joe demonstrated that the alternate driveway is not really practical.
Okay. Members of the board, any more comments, concerns?
No, I think this is justification we need to go with the original driveway, so that's fine.
Okay, anybody else? All right, so if we go to the page thirty-three, we have a neg, neg. First, we have to declare lead, do I have a motion to declare ourselves lead agency?
Motion.
Second.
First by Lascala.
Second.
Second by Bach, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have a neg, deck dated May tenth, twenty twenty one, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
First by Bach, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Roxanne, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And then on page thirty-five, we have the resolution approving subdivision plat titled preliminary subdivision map prepared for Albert A. and Deborah T. French. As amended by John, do I have a motion?
移到
By Rob, first, second by Bill, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Joe, you're all set.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Night.
You too.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Taco Bell in Mohegan Lake. This is an adjourned public hearing, amended site plan and special use permit for a drive-through. Do I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Motion.
First by Garrigan, second by Bach, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Paul, you're on.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I hope everyone's doing well. Here tonight, on behalf of Keystone, Mohegan Lake LLC, for continuation of the public hearing on this project. With me tonight is Mark Petrowo of our office, who is the head of our traffic engineering department and, and the one who prepared the traffic studies for this project. And also with us is Raghav Patel, who's the Taco Bell franchisee. So since the last meeting, our office prepared a response to some of the, the comments that we had heard from members of the public. I think it was comprehensive, it addressed a lot of the issues that were discussed. But before I touch on that, I'd like to start by turning it over to Mark, just to talk a little bit about the traffic study again and the work that was done in two thousand eight as part of the original subdivision approval. And then subsequently in two thousand eighteen. Mark, you there?
Yes, good evening, Chairman and members of the board. This is Mark Petrowo from JMC, as Paul had stated. I have worked on both traffic studies that were related to this project and, as the board is aware, there were various improvements that were done associated with the prior study. And this lot was previously proposed and approved for the drive-through bank with the drive-through. And subsequently, was not able to find a tenant, so we prepared another traffic study looking at the drive-through with a restaurant with a drive-through. And both those studies were done following the same procedures and methodologies that are used in all traffic studies, standard practice. There was a question, I believe, as it relates to the current circumstances with COVID. What is the current practice with the engineering practice of doing traffic studies is that typically when you do a study, you try to find record count information back to five years is acceptable per the state DOT guidelines. And then you, you factor up those counts. So the, even if you were to do a study now, we would be using the previous count data that we can use to project out volume. So what was done previously is still valid. And because the state, as well as other engineers, see this as a temporary condition prior to getting back to normal with everyone getting vaccinated and police is opening back up. So this, this is how our traffic studies are done currently today. So this, this is how it's viewed from a traffic engineering standpoint, as well as a state DOT standpoint and preparing traffic studies.
Mark, if I could ask a few questions, Rich Vaughn?
Absolutely.
So the state road obviously is, is designed for, for mass traffic. A lot of the concern was about a backlog of, of customers, Mohegan Avenue getting backed up at certain points of the day, people not being able to get out. And in particular, one of the, the comments that came up, which, which struck me was the use of the daycare and the potential of children coming out, getting picked up at the same time that there might be stacking at the, at the Taco Bell. And one of our prior members, very eloquently, a few meetings back, brought to our attention that COVID's changed a lot of things. And one thing we are seeing all over the place is the use of, of these drive-up windows. And, you know, frankly, I'm not sure if that's ever going to change now, the way people feel and the way the world's changed. But how do you speak in, in particular to that? The use of the, the daycare and the possible protection of the occupants of that building with any kind of stacking that might take place on the property itself?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, as I had mentioned, COVID is seen as a temporary condition. Yes, you know, there is more use of drive-throughs at this time, but as things open up and more people get vaccinated, more people will be allowed in to go into the stores and pick up or whatever they order. As you can see, other locations, you know, if they don't have drive-throughs, they do pick up spots typically, you know, people deliver other food out to particular parking locations. But there is, as you enter in the property here, as it relates to the, the daycare use, basically, when you first turn into the site driveway, they're immediately going to make that right. And so there would not be an interaction between the daycare use and the, the drive-through use. There is quite a bit of stacking between, you know, the order window and if you go back to the site driveway, but it's not projected to go out that far. But there is the direct driveway to the Taco Bell there, so they wouldn't be interacting with the daycare in that respect.
But in particular, do you think this traffic calming, just like you would on a road, traffic calming practices, you know, in your professional opinion, that could be placed in this complex? That might better protect any of the, you know, occupants of the other businesses there? Or is that something that would be?
Really, the, there's, the distances, I'm just trying to look as far as the straight sections of road. There really isn't much of a distance to implement a traffic calming. Typically, you, you would implement that more where you might see, you know, long straightaways or something like that to try to reduce speeds on, on straight sections of road. You have a lot of turns and, and curves in the road there. So as you enter in, you make that first right and there's I can't, I don't know the distance, but it's a relatively sport distance, so they got to turn right to go towards the Taco Bell. And even when they're exiting, if they were to turn left, they come to a stop sign or if they go straight from the Taco Bell and go to the, to the bank or the, the Federal Credit Union. There really isn't a, there really isn't a, a traffic calming layout that might be needed in this area due to, you know, the constraints that are here. There's really not much that can be done. There isn't the opportunity to allow for that type of speeding potential.
But there is the likelihood at some point of possible stacking and, again, I, I don't know about the busy times, but I think it's something we got to look at. When is the daycare? I can't imagine it's drop-off that would be the issue. But when, when are they exiting or when are parents coming to pick up the children at what time? And I know the owner of the proposed establishment is on. What are the Taco Bell times that would possibly interact with that? And, you know, during the last year of the COVID, what have they seen? And how have they seen their business change where, you know, I, I, I look at some of these Starbucks and we had an issue, although it's been corrected, with a, a new chain, we had Popeyes coming to town where for a while it was bad, but it's much, much, much better now. What kind of things are they seeing or you seeing to address those concerns? I mean, it's got, things have changed. And, you know, I, we really need to just make sure that we're crossing our Ts, dotting our Is, devil's in the details here and making sure that, that there are no issues there. You know, out of all the comments I heard at the first part of the public hearing, the one that I took to heart was the the use of the child daycare. And I, I want to make sure that that is clearly and without question addressed.
Yeah, absolutely. Paul, if you can, I don't know if you have any hours of the, the daycare facility, but I would assume that that the Taco Bell has later hours as far as the, the daycare as it relates to the pickup times. As you had mentioned with the, the Popeyes, we do see this on installations of newer facilities. So the Popeyes did have, you know, a very big attraction at one point, but it ends up dying down to where people become more familiar or maybe the nostalgia is not there, maybe they don't want to go there as much. But, you know, we had the same instance for Trader Joe's over in Stanford. It was, you know, it was a big opening and everyone loved it and it was fine after a little while. That it, it, it subsides, that's the only thing. So really, it's the first opening part that you might see a, a higher demand. But when it comes to normal operations, it is fully within the acceptable operations of the projected development.
So the John Myers Group, that you guys are a very big engineering firm. I think you guys employ everybody from one end of the design spectrum to the other. I know your, your company does work throughout the country with malls and, and I'm sure, I know you have another Taco Bell in, in town. And I'm sure you work throughout the county doing these types of developments, as you have a very good firm. What kinds of things have you seen over the last year that possibly could apply here and those types of changes? I mean, you guys are at the forefront of these things. I know you do huge malls throughout the country. So what, what are you guys seeing or what kind of planning changes in specific with drive-throughs are getting implemented elsewhere in the country or the county?
Well, definitely, drive-throughs are a draw just because of the restrictions that were in place. But as those restrictions are being lifted, the drive-throughs aren't as as a priority, I should say, but they, there was one of, early on, when it was restricted, where there was no one in the, in the stores, that was one of the only ways to pick up food, for instance. So that was one of the, the definite factors with the current circumstances. But again, you know, everyone sees this as just an intermittent stop before things go back to normal. And, you know, I, I would go to a restaurant and, you know, if there was a long line, I would just park into the parking space, go inside, order food and leave. So that's, that's what we'll end up seeing when, as you already starting to see, things are starting to go back into a normal position as it relates to the restrictions being lifted.
Mark, I agree with you in a lot of respects. But, and again, because of the last year, and I, I looked at our meeting tonight, right? We're all on Zoom. You guys would normally be, have to truck an hour from Armonk down to, to beautiful Yorktown, sit in our, our, you know, our, our boardroom. We don't have to do that anymore. Now, as much as things are probably going to go back somewhat to normal, I really don't know if everything's going to go back the same way. And again, I want to make sure, and I'm sure this board wants to make sure, that we've done everything we can to make sure we've prepared for that potential of not going back. So I really want you guys to look at that. I know you might not have all the answers right now. Again, this is going to go beyond this and work session, but this is something that we really need to take a look at because I really don't know that everything's just going to bounce back to the way it was. You know, I certainly hope the Zoom meetings are around for a while, Supervisor Slater. But, I mean, it is easier for everybody. Professionals don't have to come in, there's a lot of time saved. You know, I know people that are doing multiple Zoom meetings at the same time. So with all due respect, Mark, I don't know that everything's going to just bounce back the way it did.
Yeah, you, you are correct. There are things that are going to take longer to come back. So just for instance, White Plains is having their meetings in person now, so they're not doing Zoom anymore. They're doing them in person, just so you're aware. So it is coming, there are going to have in-person meetings, I'm sorry to tell you.
Hey, Rich, if I, if I could, I, I mean, I think this, this doesn't need to be about COVID, nor does it necessarily need to be about the drive-through. I think the question is the coexistence of a fast food restaurant, which by its nature is transient in terms of its visitors, right? They come and go quickly, hence fast food. And the daycare center, right? So first and foremost, on every project we look at is health and safety. And so I think the questions, and I, I think your questions about the traffic calming devices or some other means to increase the confidence of the people who are leaving their children at the daycare center or driving there to pick them up, that, you know, these two facilities can coexist. that, you know, these two facilities can coexist uh with one another. So I don't think it's really about the drive-through necessarily, right? It is about the overall increase of traffic to that particular parcel and the fact that every person that's going to travel to the fast food establishment has to pass by the entrance to the daycare center. So it's an issue. I mean, it's a, it's an issue of health and safety and that's what should always come first. Um, so I don't think it's necessarily just tied to the drive-through. And COVID come or go, I mean, it's, you know, the, they want to sell tacos and so they want people to visit. So that's, you know, the issue is the traffic control, the traffic calming and the ability for these two facilities, these two places to coexist safely.
Um, Mark, I I just like, uh, could you just talk a little bit about the um, you know, the the ITE uh analyses and the studies and and how that relates to timing of different uses?
So uh, I was going to say, in the study that we did in two thousand eighteen, we actually uh looked at the comparison of the approved drive-through to the fast food and you do have similar numbers as far as traffic from an IT standpoint, from what was previously approved to the fast food use. Um, so the, it is something similar that you would have even with the, with a bank as far as traffic volumes are are concerned. Um, but the uh fast food use again is really more of of the, you know, later evening uh kind of thing where, you know, people are going to get food, whereas the daycare would be, you know, potentially after work picking up your kids uh or earlier. Um, so that that's as far as the timing of, you know, the traffic and the operations there.
And Mark, the ITE data does factor in the to the timing, the peak timing of the different uses?
Well, the the IT data, uh, we look at the the roadway peak uh from the hours of four to six PM uh for this particular uh time period that we're we're discussing. Uh, because really, the the morning one isn't really the concern, it's really the evening is what I understand from listening to the board. Um, so that's, that's how we have these generation volumes. And again, these, these volumes are based on studies that um engineers across the country and over here in New York and, you know, ev- uh, United States, they've done these studies at these locations and counting these volumes. And based on these studies, this is how the ITE projects these volumes. So it's based on actual locations, uh, so these are what, how these volumes are projected.
Uh, Mark, could you address the specific findings of the traffic study? I know the study itself is some three hundred pages long, but there is a smaller fifteen-page summary. Isn't it true that there are certain times of the day, uh, of certain days in which traffic at every level is going to be pushed down, you know, to a worse level? If this project goes in?
I, I don't, uh, I'm pulling it up right now. The the traffic study summarizes in two thousand eighteen that the operations at the intersections are going to be, would operate at similar operations as if they were with the bank uh at this location.
Don't some of them go one level down, like for example, from a C to a D and a D to an E and things of that sort? And for the benefit of people watching, each level of in, higher in the alphabet is a worse uh level of performance as far as traffic is concerned, is that right?
Yes, it basi- it it's, it's, it depends on what type of control is at the intersection. Uh, but the level of service is based on the the average vehicle delay anticipated at the particular movement. Um, so.
So tell me, what um, what are the specific impacts on various levels of traffic functioning as a result of this project that are summarized in your report?
I I believe when when you compare the bank to the fast food, uh, the only level of service that changed uh was the, uh, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, it's the eastbound left turn lane on Route Six in the peak PM hour. That that delay increased by a second or two and pushed that level of service from a uh a C to a D, I believe. And that's, that level, that delay was already at the threshold for that level of service. So um, all the other levels of service that were analyzed were maintained um for the two different uses.
Thank you, but is that the proper question that we should be focusing on at this point? Whether or not there's going to be a change from a bank use to a fast food use or from no use to this use? I thought that we should be considering what is the specific impact of this project? And I was wondering how the re- traffic report addressed that.
Well, in all, in two thousand eight, when when the subdivision was originally approved, that, you know, all the, all the traffic improvements that were installed were done to support the three different uses on the property, including the bank use. Um, it just happens that the bank use was never built. Um, so as far as any potential mitigations go uh from one use to another, I mean, those were all, uh, that that was all constructed and and uh designed in coordination with the DOT um at that time to to support that traffic.
So, you know, it's, it's a question of, the traffic on that road is difficult at times. I think everyone knows it, we've all experienced it and certainly members of the public either have expressed that concern or will likely do so this evening. And the question is, how much responsibility does the last project in have for traffic that's been building up in an area for a long time? And what is our responsibility as a, as a planning board to take that into consideration? Those are the issues I'm thinking about as I'm, you know, reviewing the paperwork here. And I was just hoping that you could enlighten me on what those impacts, you know, are anticipated to be.
Yeah, I think, I think uh it, to add into what Aaron's saying, I think the question is, what is the ch- uh, impact to the traffic system from today's situation as opposed to the uh build of this project? Regard- regardless of change from bank to fast food, so on and so forth, where are we today, levels of service? What will be the impact of this um project on the traffic system? Will there be a diminishment in the levels of service to any of the uh intersection uh operations?
So the, in the traffic study, what we typically do is we, we look at different conditions. We look at existing conditions, so as they were when the study was done, versus future conditions. And in the future, we look at no build with no development or we look, or we look at the future with development. So when you compare existing to the future, that's not really an apples-to-apples comparison. You need to really be looking at the no-build condition, which is the future without the project versus the future with the project. That really gives you a an, a very similar apples-to-apples comparison. When you look at that, there is, like Paul said, a very minor change in level, in delay that results because of an upper level service threshold at one of the locations. But from existing to no-build, you have increases that are related to other projects potentially. Specifically, I see one, um, but it's only a few seconds. It goes from existing uh from fifty-four point two seconds to fifty-five point nine seconds. And it, and because it's at the upper limit under existing conditions, it kicks it into the next level of service. So it's not really representative to look at existing conditions to future conditions, but really no-build conditions, which is the future without the project, to build with the project.
And and Mark, just to, just so everyone is clear, in the study, when you compare the future no-build, which is the design year without the project being there and then the build condition, that's what you're referring to in those increases?
Correct, so the, as you had mentioned before, Paul, there was one uh location that uh saw a minor increase, but all the rest of the level of service stays the same. That's, that's when we're looking between the no-build, which is the design year of the project, to the, to the same year, but with the project also implemented or constructed and operating. The other thing that I can mention is that the, when the realignment of Mohegan Avenue was done as part of the the prior approved project, the improvements were done in a way that the Lakeland and Mohegan would go together. DOT did not implement that phasing, so they have them going separately. So it's hard to uh have them change that if there was, it's considered split phasing of the traffic signal timing. So in speaking with the DOT, it's difficult to remove that and make it go as a common where they go together. But that is one of the uh operational constraints at the, at this location. The other uh thing of note is that this signal is part of the adaptive traffic signal system that was implemented as part of the Cortland crossing project. So that adaptive traffic signal system does improve the operations at the signal. Um, and the adaptive traffic signal, uh, it goes from this intersection all the way to Jerro- Jerome, which is that signaled by the former uh Circuit City location on Route Six. So that's where the adaptive traffic signal uh locations are along Route Six here.
Another question came up, what, what are going to be the proposed hours of operations of this facility?
Uh, the proposed hours of operation are seven AM to two AM.
Everybody from the board have any other questions?
Yeah, I guess maybe just one more and maybe it's somewhere in that traffic study. But again, I'm I'm less concerned about increase of delays at the light of the intersection East Main of Mohe- Mohegan and it's really that egress or ingress uh location at the entrance to the property. Is there any thing that you can reference or discuss relative to that um? That kind of the traffic on-site, on the, where all the buildings are versus the roads around it? Or is that just not captured?
No, we analyzed that as part of the the previous traffic study and the operations at that location are level service B and better. So it's a level service B and A at the different approaches to that intersection.
And and Mark, did we do, did we do any kind of driveway clearing analysis?
No, we did not. So looking at, looking at the driveway exiting on a Saturday, you're looking at uh an average delay of under ten seconds.
What, what are, what is the Taco Bell's, what is their busiest times? When's their, you know, heaviest hours of operation and days?
Uh, Ragav Patel, are you, are you able to address that?
Uh, yes, uh, this is Ragav Patel. Um, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
What are your busiest, busiest hours? What time of day, what day of the week, when do you see the the heaviest travel in a Taco Bell?
Uh, so during the week, um, I would say Monday through Thursday, uh, our busiest time is from five PM to uh eight PM. Uh, it, we do see a a good lunch business, but our heaviest hours are in the PM. Um, and then Friday and Saturday are busiest days, uh, also in the evening. So I would say dinner is very strong in terms of sales and lunch is the second.
So why the need to stay up until two o'clock in the morning?
Um, so Taco Bell as a, as a brand, um, has shown strong numbers of sales uh in the late night business. Um, I don't know if people are craving tacos at night, but um certainly nationwide, they, they've done the research and uh, I wouldn't say we're extremely busy, but we, we have enough, usually enough sales to, to warrant to stay open till late. Now, not every Taco Bell is equal, some don't um stay open till two AM. Uh, and granted, in our Carmel location, we're only open to two AM Friday and Sunday. So it it, it may be that this location may not be busy and then we'll end up closing it or if it is, then we'll, we'll keep it open till two AM.
John and Jim, as we go through this process, do we have any uh right to limit the hours if we wish?
Oh, you can do, let's be straight to trade, come on.
Um, and just asking the question, Bill.
Uh, yes, you do have the right to limit the hours of operation based upon the findings she made.
Lo- lo- let me, let me just say one thing. I have my children, my grandchildren, my great-grandchildren, I've been taking them to daycare for 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 years. Daycare, I always saw it between eight o'clock and nine o'clock in the morning, the kids are dropped off. They're picked up between three thirty and four thirty and that's it. I can't see how the daycare is conflicting with, I mean, somebody educate me. Yeah, and and besides, daycare usually has an escorted child from, they call, they say, who, who you picking up? Joe Smith, and they yell out Joe Smith and somebody brings him out to the car. The same way when you drop off, there's somebody there to take you. So it's a very secure situation when you have daycare hours. And I don't see it where it conflicts with the, I may be wrong, but I don't see it conflicting with the hours of uh, of Taco Bell.
And and Bill, to your point, what you're saying is exactly what I think we're looking to hear from the applicant. You know, as you, this is, you know, one campus here, this three different uses. We want to make sure that as we go through this process, that the three uses work together and there's no harm from one to the other. And it's, it's their responsibility to show us or to tell us how that's going to work.
When you talk about busy traffic, there's no more busier traffic than the daycare next to a the Loma building. That, that's a nightmare and my kids used to go there sometimes. I mean, you got a hundred cars an hour passing by there maybe, who knows? I mean, so I I can't see how Taco Bell is going to uh be a detriment to the daycare or the daycare, uh, either, either way, I just don't see it.
Well, most daycares are open way past four thirty.
Well, now, with the way the world works, there's extended care, people are working later. You know, they're, they're looking for care after, after hours. Um, I know it exists, I remember when my daughters were younger, uh, we would look to the school, you know, for the extra hours sometimes. Um, but Bill, exactly to your point, that's why we're, we're looking, we're asking the questions because I think these, these obviously have to get answered.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, please. So a few things that we are doing in this business that are unique to to this specific location. Um, we're adding something called line busters, where we have employees come out whenever the line is very long with their tablets to take orders to expedite the process. And we're also adding a third production line. Most Taco Bells have two, but we've decided to invest in a third that, so that we don't allow for the line to back up on the, our parking.
Okay, before I go to the public, because I see some people have their hands up. Anything else from the board at this point?
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
By all means, Jim.
Uh, Paul, one of the comments that came in from the public expressed the concern about pollution in Lake Mohegan. Can you address that and explain what Taco Bell is doing to uh minimize or eliminate that as a potential concern for the planning board?
Sure, um, I mean, first and foremost, you know, this uh, this area of the site, uh, this parking lot uh is going to have its own um drainage system and stormwater pollution prevention plan. I mean, there, there is a water quality unit that'll collect uh any debris on the site that that um, you know, flows off in 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 a rain. Um, you know, the, the site is, i- it's not pitched, uh, the, the way that the grading is, is uh, the site drains away from Lake Mohegan, so I don't know that uh, that would be a a particular concern.
that would be a particular concern, but um yeah, there will be trash receptacles as well um throughout the property too.
All right, will the applicant have people patrolling the parking lot to pick up uh garbage and litter uh during uh the course of the day?
Uh Mr. Patel, is that part of your operation?
Yes, uh we, it's part of the Taco Bell standard travel path uh to periodically have people uh or an employee to make rounds in the store and the parking lot to make sure there's no litter or trash.
And do you do that during the entire period of time that you're open?
Uh so, yes, we are required to do it throughout the entire day. Um and also, you know, change the garbages and whatnot.
And so that's a Taco Bell corporate standard that you have to adhere to?
Correct, it's it's a part of our audit.
Okay.
If there's trash, then I lose points.
And Paul, do you happen to know um what, to what level uh year of storm the stormwater system is designed to?
Yes, uh the stormwater system is designed to the hundred year storm on this property.
All right, that's all the questions I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jim. John, you have anything to add at this point?
Not at this point, no, thank you.
I saw Dan C R C on, Dan, you got anything to add? Thought I saw him on.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question, if that's okay?
By all means, man.
Uh I was just to dovetail off of what Jim asked, which was a great question, uh and the reason it is is because I spent time uh with members of the Mohegan Lake Improvement District during the Battle of Yorktown just past that site on Mohegan Avenue near the Culvert. And it collects, I can tell you firsthand, a a ton of debris. Well, I I'm just wondering from Taco Bell's standpoint if their monitoring would only apply to the parking lot or if they would be uh committing to a more robust program that includes that stretch as you head towards the lake?
Sorry, go ahead, Paul.
It it would just include the the Taco Bell parking lot. Uh and I don't believe that um this drainage network on this uh downgrading of Mohegan Avenue connects to that uh system more toward the lake.
I think it was more about the roadside litter, and so less about the drainage, more about people driving up Mohegan Ave uh and tossing, whether it's, we we collected everything from soda cans to uh fast food wrappers, um cartons, everything in between, uh out of the woods right there, uh coming up Mohegan Avenue right. So I I wasn't sure if that would be part of your surveillance.
Ragav, would you like to add to that or?
Uh we we would strictly uh be monitoring the the four points of our property. Um so the the parking lot itself uh and the landscaping within it.
Understood, I appreciate it. I know that was one of the questions I was asked by members of the MLID uh when I was with them pertaining to this application, so thank you for that.
Understood, no problem.
Dan, you got anything to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that, yeah, the um that this site is not tributary to Lake Mohegan. So the stormwater practices, which will also um capture some of the the fugitive garbage, will will be captured in there. Um but, you know, to the point of, you know, debris, you know, fast food does generate a lot of trash. So convenient um trash receptacles for people who decide to eat in their car, that they don't throw stuff out the window as they leave the site would probably be prudent, and that's, I think, a sort of simple thing to add um to help manage the trash in the neighborhood.
Thanks, Dan. All right, anybody else in the board, professional members, before you go to the public? Robin, anybody could tell me who was first?
Um well, Jay had talked, chatted to me first before he raised his hand.
All right, so Jay? How are you? What do you got?
Uh good evening.
Good evening.
I've got a list I'll go through quickly. First and foremost, I don't believe the traffic study is independent. The engineer is part of the corporation is doing the build. Secondly, this type of fast food operation usually has younger drivers, and we know what their driving abilities are and the risks they take. Just come down two oh two in the high school that's out by the park, and you can see what happens. Westbound traffic turning south on from the left turn lane onto Mohegan can be problematic and result in T-bone accidents to cause exceeding the speed limit going eastbound. As the applicant mentioned, Popeye has hired additional people to do traffic control. As the engineer stated, state DOT will not do anything about the traffic lights. And last but not least, and I'm surprised the Mohegan District didn't bring it up. But northbound traffic on Lexington can turn into Mohegan Lake, come through the residential area, down Mohegan, making the left onto Mohegan Avenue, and then the left into the parking lot to try to beat the traffic on six, and that hadn't been mentioned by anybody, I do not believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Mr. Bray, you're next.
Uh hi, board. Uh uh and I think Jay kind of touched on it. Um one thing, so and it's been referred to a lot, I've been going through the comments and responses um in the in the meeting uh packet. And one thing I've noticed is that the, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear on this, is that the the traffic study that was done in twenty eighteen for the rezoning, we're still relying on it, and it was done by the applicant. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I mean, and I I think like the colloquialism, I don't even know if I can pronounce that word, is the fox guarding the hen house, and I think like legally, you would say that that's kind of a uh conflict of interest to have the applicant doing their own traffic study. So at the question I have is, is can we have an independent traffic study confirm what was done three years ago by the applicant who's trying to get the Taco Bell here?
Mr. Bray, I I know the town board to that question. Very uh timely question, if I could say that. The town board uh interviewed traffic consultants um for that very purpose and for others. I think they're being very forward thinking with the traffic.
No, I appreciate that. I I and I don't think that uh JRM is or JMC uh is being dishonest, but it it does seem like a bit of a conflict. I would be surprised if they arrived at the conclusion that they couldn't do it. Um if they're doing their own traffic study. Um the other one, uh I've got a, just on the response number three that we had, uh you know, what the question was, has the applicant explored having an entrance on Route six? And the response was, a driveway on Route six would not be ideal. And my question is, ideal for who? Because it seems like having a second point of ingress and egress. And they allude to the fact that uh New York State DOT might not approve it, but it seems like that conversation hasn't happened. And I went through to see, because right, you can't have a curb cut slash driveway within X number of feet of a an intersection, meaning Mohegan Ave. But I believe on the south side of that property, uh on Route six, you could do uh an additional ingress egress, which I think would actually benefit both Taco Bell and the community, because I I just feel like move, you know, if the main entrance is on the side street where you have to go on to Mohegan Avenue, where it does get backed up, and we've we've talked about that. Um I I don't understand uh who who is it not ideal for, I believe is the question. Um and like, why not? Because like you you could, on that far part of the lot towards St. Mary's, you could certainly get a driveway within New York State DOT standards uh to do a driveway, and that, maybe that's the entrance to uh I don't know how that works, but like it it seems like in the applicant's response, it di- it didn't seem like that has been explored. I think the answer was no, they didn't do it. Um response number four, you know, should the queue on Mohegan Avenue extend past the site driveway, which is the one that goes to Learning Center and Hudson Valley? Uh the the answer was, they'll just have to wait there until it clears. And I was like, well, you know, because Mohegan Avenue, there's like residents that aren't going to either of those that are going to queue up for them, and it's like, you know, and you get into traffic issues. There's a lot of traffic issues here. Um uh one other thing, so and I did see the response about the loading, and it was, I believe, on C one hundred was the plan. And I checked the meeting packet, I didn't see a new plan, and I was just hoping the applicant could show me uh because they said they had the turning, like I I would just like to see that, like uh the comment was basically that, yes, we have the loading, and it was shown on C one hundred, but I went back to the last meeting packet, uh and I think it's Paul, and maybe he could just highlight where that is. I I just couldn't find the the loading area.
Yeah.
Done in the response.
So we've designated a loading area on the forgive me, I can't see my North Arrow, uh on the southern corner of the property uh within the access drive. And we've shown a truck uh man maneuvering in and out of that area.
Uh on the sub, so I uh over, so that's the the load, but isn't that on Hudson, that's on the credit union property, not yours?
Uh that's on the access drive between the two properties, but it is on our property. Uh the property line runs here.
I apologize, I'm trying to zoom in here. Can you zoom in a little bit? So and can you just highlight the the property line there? So, oh, I got you, I got you. It but that's also uh an easement between the two properties, right?
Uh there's no.
Because it's like a drive, right, from Hudson Valley into yours, so like, so when the truck comes, they block that area?
Yeah, for for the period of time that they'll be loading. Um
If I could jump in, when do you expect the loading to take place?
Uh Ragav, correct me if I'm wrong, the the loading generally takes place uh late at night when the restaurant's not very busy.
Uh it typically varies, but they they prefer to have it either uh in the morning, when it's not busy, or later in the evening when it's uh when it's also slower.
So in this case, the morning is going to be busy because of the daycare.
Uh we can always make a request to uh to claim to to come at a different time. Unfortunately, they they're their own company and and they kind of, unless there's an ordinance that says otherwise, they 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 set their own times, but we can request to for the safety of the the daycare to have a different time.
Yeah, not even just the daycare, but it sure, okay, but like, so these are words we're saying, but to be clear, like, for example, across the street, uh Dunkin' Donuts or uh Mohegan Lake Motors, when they get deliveries, they don't use little box trucks, which obviously a sixteen wheeler is not turning down Mohegan Avenue and then going through this. So like, do you ever get deliveries from a a eighteen wheeler? Uh a larger than box truck that would fit in that little area that you're showing me there? Because I I just pragmatically, what I'm saying is that we see it all the time, and you'll probably hear it from other people. Right on Route six, it's, the move is just park in the middle of that center lane right there, and then unload your donuts, unload your cars, do whatever you need to do. Like, I I just, I don't know, I'm just unconvinced by that little area there at the edge of your property line, going right into Hudson Valley, um that that's really sufficient for loading. And you guys are high volume. It's not like you're you're getting a delivery a week. I mean, this is probably daily, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Bray, thank you very much. You got anything else to add?
Uh the other thing I I have to add is, so the refuse container, I'm assuming that little structure there? Uh right, yes, right there. Uh there were, I I mean, I I appreciate the desire to push it to your neighbors as far away as you possibly can, but I feel like that's not a permitted obstruction within a rear yard. Well, actually, isn't, this isn't a rear yard, it's a side yard. Um but I I was looking, and I'll put it to you in writing, because I can tell everybody's getting tired. Well, uh I I don't believe that you can just tuck the putrid fast food waste up against your neighbor. Like, I would be shocked if town code permits that, and I believe I have the sections to back it up, and I won't bore you with them here. Um
We do appreciate you putting that in writing.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Thank you. You've had some very good questions.
Give me ten days after we uh close and approve this tonight.
All right, absolutely.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Bray.
Have a good night.
Mrs. Thank you, good question. I see Mrs. Guerra, if I'm pronouncing that right, I I apologize.
You got it right.
Thank you.
So um just, I will try to make this quick. So according to YPD, there have been forty-three accidents at that intersection since the improvements were put into place in two thousand and eight. Um also, as somebody who drives on that intersection pretty much every single day, every single day, people are running the red light specifically going south on Route six. Just like, I'll be stuck at the, trying to make the left and just, it's kind of shocking, it's usually like five, it's not like just one person making run the red, it's like five people. Um the other thing, how will the building affect the, when you're going north, how will the building affect that right on red? Because it's a really weird right on red, where it's far back and it's just, it's very far back. Um and finally, I sent you all our, I don't know if you all got it, but I sent you a Business Insider article that discussed the late night hours of Taco Bell, and specifically mentioned that among all the other fast food establishments, Taco Bell, they're most, it says it specifically, the most important demographic is drunk customers, and this is from Business Insider, and those customers are between nine PM and two AM. So I think that that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and your questions. Anybody else in the audience or the public? See anybody else, Robin?
Uh Alyssa Salvo.
Are you there?
Yep, I'm here, sorry, thank you.
It's all right, how are you?
Um just a couple of comments, so um I think saying forty-three accidents in thirteen years is a a interesting number, that's three accidents per year on average. Um also, in relation to the types of customers, if any of you have ever visited the one in Yorktown that is not a drive-through, those are not the type of customers going into that store. Um I can tell you, as somebody who has been there before and who actually went there recently, I was in there surrounded with uh middle-aged white men, all in suits or scrubs, leaving the doctor's offices in the area. So I don't think it's fair to um judge a business based on the type of people. Um from a traffic standpoint, makes sense. But I think it's also worth noting, um you know, the overlap in times, uh is a daycare and a fast food restaurant overlapping in times? I would say, obviously, during the week, of course, probably between the hours of, let's say, four and eight PM, that would make sense. Um yes, daycare hours run late. I'm somebody who lives down the road around the corner, I plan on having my children attend that daycare. I plan on being a I plan on being a customer of that Taco Bell. Um, and I don't plan on doing both of them at the same time. So I think that there's, um, you know, a couple of things that yes, while there's questions about, uh, you know, pollution and garbage and things like that. I think that when we're talking about bringing a business into a town that, you know, if you drive around, we're a ghost town of businesses. Um, I think it's worth noting to say that are we turning down businesses for good reasons at this point? Are we concerned with three car accidents a year that yes, it's terrible, tragic, things like that shouldn't happen. But are we holding on to numbers that are preventing us from developing? Because something happened at that type of rate. Again, that's something that you never want to happen, but at the end of the day, we're, why are we preventing businesses from coming to our town?
Thank you, Mrs. Salvo. Uh, and you know, interesting point you brought up and I, I gotta tell you, I've been confronted, um, by people in the public. Sometimes people confront you very, they're very angry about things and they, they look to this board and the town board as being, uh, I don't want to say obstructionist, but that we're not promoting business. I, I gotta tell you. In my, I want to say 15 years volunteering for these boards, be it the conservation of this board. We're not obstructionists. We want to see business. We all reside. Everybody on this board is a volunteer. We volunteer our time and our different expertises. Um, and what we are looking for is responsible development. We're not anti anything. Obviously this piece of property years back, a few years back, had been changed by a prior town board for the current zoning. What we're doing here is asking questions and a public hearing is just that. Public hearing, all the neighbors are notified. We want to hear these questions because you guys are more intimate to that area. Now I live on New Road. I'm in Shrobo right down the street. I walk here a lot. I drive here a lot. I'm a frequent person along that roadway. We're just here to make sure that the applicant addresses all the concerns by one, the public and the board and our professionals. Cause at the end of the day, they do the heavy lifting. So we're not anti anything. In fact, the Yorktown Town Board, I believe it was last year Supervisor Slater and his board, the board went out and did this whole Destination Y where they did advertising. They went out and tried to solicit people to come and see Yorktown. They really did an admirable job to try to get people to come back. So the town, our board, we don't go out and solicit, we wait for people to come to us. It could be Taco Bell, McDonald's, Chick-fil-A. Trader Joe's, we don't go out and pick them. They come to us and we weigh the merits of the application on its presentation. Every, every piece of property is different. Every piece of property is like a fingerprint. None of them are the same. This one is unique. The Taco Bell that John Myers and Paul is doing on Route 202 is very different to this. So our charge and our job is one to protect the town and promote responsible development. So the questions we're asking is not because we're anti building or Taco Bell. It's so that we get a safe, responsible development. I just wanted to get that out there. Cause I've had people come at me. I can't begin to tell you. It's, it's wild. The people, I think we should start to do a, John, maybe a public informational each meeting of what this board and the other boards actually do, because there's a real misconception on it. Although I do appreciate everybody's comments. I think they were all very well meant and intention. We're going to move on. Anybody else in the public, Rob?
Um, Randall Dugan.
Mr. Dugan?
Hi, yes. How are you doing, Richard and Town Board? Um, my name is, um, good. My name's Randall Duggan and I live actually up the hill at the intersection of Mohegan Avenue and Schofield Road. So I don't want to cover anything too redundant, but one concern I have is that Taco Bell is going to divert a lot of traffic on the Mohegan Avenue up the hill and then towards Naby Day Camp, the Lexington, uh, connection. And at our intersection of Mohegan Avenue and Schofield Road, right now it's a stop-stop yield intersection, which is a little bit awkward. I think converting it to a stop-stop-stop would clean it up and, and help with, uh, speed control. Also capturing some speed bumps, potentially going up the Mohegan Avenue Hill. And then in advance of that intersection would provide speed control in the same way that it's been effective from the intersection going down towards, uh, towards Naby Day Camp. So that's a, a, um, a, a set of recommendations I have there. On Supervisor Slater's point, I'm also part of Mohegan Lake Improvement District and there's been a number of years where we walked that section of road from, um, My Beach, Mohegan Highlands, down towards the church, across, and then up the hill by the, uh, Mohegan Outfall towards the Taco Bell. And you get litter in the woods, you get litter in the, uh, you know, in the wetlands there. And so having a security camera or way to kind of monitor from the Taco Bell in the direction of the lake and make sure we can, um, you know, control litter and, and keep greater accumulation of, of, of that. Preserve the south end of the, uh, you know, the lake would be good. Two additional points, both at the intersection of six and Mohegan Avenue. Kind of touching on what, um, Stacey, uh, Stacey Williams brought up last time. About 15 years ago, I analogously got in an intersection. Um, or I'm sorry, got in a accident at the intersection of Route six and then taking a left on Mohegan Avenue. And then where you're going to take a right into the Taco Bell. And what's unusual at that intersection is you have a long stretch from that left turn to the crosswalk on the other side. And it's kind of a no man's land. So when you're taking that left, um, if a car is going from, you know, green to yellow to red, there's an extended period of time where they can come through and, uh, potentially hit you as, as a vehicle. And sharing a couple of ideas I wanted to convey kind of on her behalf. She wasn't able to be here tonight. Number one would be to consider having a green arrow where you just go with the green arrow of like a green arrow only on that left turn and not allowing the left with a, just a regular green, which kind of puts you out in the intersection and at, at a risk of being hit or in that no man's land. And I think that's going to be exacerbated as you have, um, more traffic and younger drivers in the intersection. The other point is can that, um, crosswalk on the other side be brought a little bit closer to the actual corner to kind of shrink that distance? So you don't have as, as much territory in there. So those, uh, those are my points. Thank you very much.
And the very well stated questions. Thank you very much. Good points. Any bells, Robin?
No.
Bells from the board or the professional team?
I did want to ask Paul about, I had sent you an email from the Saint Mary's about, um, possibly putting a fence along their border. They're worried about, um, people parking in their lot to go to the Taco Bell and, um, litter.
Yes. Uh, thank you for reminding me, Robin. Uh, we did talk to Raghav Patel and his group about that. Um, they are amenable to constructing a fence along the property line between the two properties. It would, we would, you know, keep the plantings that we've designed in coordination with the Conservation Board and, and Abaka, but we would, uh, place the fence right on the property line to, to separate the two properties.
So Robin?
Right. Um, we should just talk about what kind of fence at some point.
I, I think at this point we've got more questions appears than, uh, than usual. John or Jim, what do you think the best course of action at this point is?
My recommendation would be to continue to hold the public hearing open until more of these questions are addressed.
Any thoughts, John?
Well, we can work with the applicant to, you know, provide some responses on some of the questions. There's been a lot of study on this site rega- as it regards traffic. I think maybe we can help to collate some of that stuff and demystify it a little better. So it's a little clearer. Uh, you know, the discussion tonight was kind of a rolling discussion. And so I think if we work with the applicant, we may be able to get a little, uh, clear information out. Uh, we'd also like to, uh, visit some of the accident data, which we're still waiting on, I believe. Uh, it sounds like there is some accident data that's out there.
Um, I can actually address that now if you would like, John. This is Mark Patero from JMC. So we did request accident data. Um, and we have it for the last, the three years prior to COVID. Um, there were 11 accidents which relate to a 3.66 accident rate, accidents per year, um, which was similar to what, um, um, Ms. Salvo had, uh, mentioned. Um, of those 11 accidents, seven of them are driver related, uh, mostly related to following too closely. Um, there was also a speeding accident. Um, one was related to a police chase. Um, another one was related to a vehicle equipment failure. Um, so these, this is not a high accident location. Um, typically the manual uniform traffic control devices looks at intersections, uh, having five or more intersect accidents a year. Um, as far as a need for a traffic signal. So typically that's what you're looking at as, uh, as far as accidents.
And so the, the question, uh, the seven accidents that we're following too closely, I assume that was on Route six, moving either east to west or west to east. Uh, and someone wasn't paying attention. There was a rear end, right?
There, there were, I believe, two or three rear ends. Um, there were, uh, two or three related to someone making a left turn onto Mohegan Avenue, but one of them was related to, uh, someone just not driving correctly and took the turn too fast and overtook it. Uh, actually got her license, I believe that day, according to the report.
Boy.
Um, so, uh, the other items that I just wanted to touch base on was, uh, there was the discussion of the, uh, second possible access on Route six. So the DOT would not look favorably on that. I know from experience based on working with them for many years. You would introduce another leg into that intersection, um, and uh, it, it would, uh, potentially increase, you know, vehicle conflicts if another entrance is in that location. Um, the other thing is related to that crosswalk. Um, the crosswalk, if it goes closer to the intersection, it lengthens the amount of time for someone to cross the intersection. So, um, it would thereby increase the amount of time needed to cross that intersection. DOT has typically been looking to shorten cro- crosswalks, um, so that it doesn't take as long to cross through the intersections. Um, and that's just, uh, some of the items I just wanted to touch base on.
I just saw a chat open up and it said, those are state police reports, not Yorktown. Is there any way to verify that?
These were obtained through the state. But they are, they do have Yorktown Patrol in here. We can request them again, but these are, uh, the accidents were from March 1st, 2017 through the end of February, 2020.
Thanks, Mark. John, with the amount of questions about the traffic and the town going towards uh, obtaining consultant, is this something we should consider at this point? Or is it too early in the process with the town board getting the consultant?
Uh, I think it should be considered. It, it depends on how quickly that goes and there's no way to tell that at, at present.
Yeah.
Uh, this by, by the way, this site, the entire site and its design layout configuration, long with the intersection was not only, uh, looked at by JMC as the applicant's traffic engineer uh, and site engineer, but was also vetted by our then traffic consultant, which was at the time Jacobs Edwards Kelsey. So they reviewed the entire site, which at the time had the bank. Uh, the 2018 was really an update to that, I believe, and Mark and Paul can correct me on that. Uh, which brought it up to date and also, uh, looked at the difference between a bank and a retail situation or a fast food situation. It really has been vetted, uh, by our consultant, albeit, uh, a while ago, but the, the overall traffic. Uh, report that was, um, done in support of this site was reviewed by the Towns Traffic Consultant.
Alright, so it sounds like you, Dan and, and the, uh, Paul and Mark will get together?
Yeah.
Alright, anything else? Were we missing anything? So I, I'm going to lead towards Jim's recommendation. How, Jim, how long can we legally keep a hearing open?
I've never seen a limit on it, but I think, uh, it would be governed by the rule of reason. You have to get to the point where there's really very little more that's going to come out as a result of the hearing either for or against the proposal. And I don't think we're there yet. I think even the applicant would concede that there are uh, questions that need to be answered before the board could issue uh, a secret finding or approve, uh, a site plan for this.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate your input. Alright, so on Jim's lead, any other questions from the board or are we gonna move to keep to, to adjourn the public hearing?
I move to adjourn the public hearing.
Is there a second?
A second.
First by Bach, second by Biscanti. All's in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, La Scala. Motion carried. Two out and Rob Gargan.
You're, you're talking about adjourning or keeping it open?
Keeping it open.
Oh, I'd like to give it.
Okay, so before we had one, an objection with Scala. Do you hear that, Nancy? Okay. Thank you very much.
Rich, one comment, one comment. I would, I would urge the applicant uh, to think about at least my perspective around the health and safety on the site. And, and also contemplate, uh, you know, whether there are some traffic devices or something to be done in that afternoon, evening hours, where obviously the traffic will be highest for everybody. And then maybe even contemplating the idea of, uh, you know, adopting a road uh, up to Sagamore or something like that in terms of some of the concerns that the neighbors have around the, the litter and so forth. So just some things to think about as they go away.
Very good points. Thank you, Rob. Okay. Next, we have the par three golf course. This is a public hearing. Location is 795 Route six. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? Motion. Motion by Bach. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by La Scala. All's in favor? Aye. Name's your honor.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us again. Uh, looking forward to get this, uh, public hearing going. Um, we've certainly gone back and, uh, worked on the, the parking plan as you meant, you wanted, as well as the tree mitigation plan. Uh, I believe Robin has both of those and she disseminated that to the planning board. Um, Sean Murphy here is, uh, here to talk about a little bit about the tree mitigation plan as well. Do you have any questions for us to get us started? Hello?
Hello? Yeah, I'm sorry. Please go ahead. You have a, you want to share your screen?
Uh, okay. Sean, do you? Robin, do you have the tree mitigation plan?
Describe the amendments you've done so far, guys. Since the board has less seen them.
Uh, where, where, where are we at? Um, again, we can go on, um, you have all the paperwork that I sent in. Um, do you want me to go over what, um, up to date, where, where, where we're at? Is that?
Yep. Come on, Sean.
Alright, so you know, we put the plan together, the mediation plan, remediation plan. Um, again, I'll go over it at, at, uh, the.
Um, again, I'll go over it, at, uh, the, the trees that were taken down. There were approximately sixty trees that were cut down. There were approximately seventy-eight trees total in remediation. Um, of these sixty that were cut down, most were the Norway maples, the ashes. And of those trees that we had to take down to get the greens and the tee boxes in shape, there are certain trees that had to, um, come down on the, uh, advice of Arnold Palmer when they were up walking a course with us. Um, of those, uh, like I said, sixty trees were approximately cut down. Um, another eighteen trees were dead and on the ground. So that brought us up to probably about a total of seventy-eight that were trees that were removed from the property. And, um, again, I said the majority of those trees were ash, Norway maple, which is an invasive species. And a lot of those trees, some of those trees had to come down for the greens and the tees. Um, the existing trees that are still on the course are oaks. There are still a few maples, um, pines and hemlocks. Um, I don't know if anybody has, I, I brought it up once before, and this is actually out to the public for the people that wanted to come back and fight us on everything. Um, I wish everybody would read their Ray Arnold report two thousand and eight, which Susan Seagull had commissioned out for a property analysis. Um, if people read that, and then so what the course was, we basically cleaned the course up. Probably spent about six months cleaning up the dump that the town used as a dump. Somebody was dumping back there. Up to date, we brought it all up to speed. If anybody's walked the course and have seen it, um, the greens are all settled in. We have the irrigation that was put in for the greens that they can maintain throughout the season. And pretty much what you guys have asked us to do, we've done. And that's pretty much what I have on our end. Is there any questions?
Sean, can you talk about the number of trees that you're putting back?
Yes, in the remediation, in the remediation of the trees, we're gonna be putting back approximately ninety-one trees, which is probably about twenty percent, eighteen to twenty percent more than what we took out. Um, those trees are specifically picked out to, uh, for the design of the course and also basically for the safety of the golf, of the golfers and people that are out there. Um, the trees that will be re, uh, being replanted, here we go. Um, on this, the color-coded are the trees that are already existing on the golf course. The trees that are not color-coded, if you look on the left on the key, that's, you know, that's, that, that's not the, that's not the map that is up to date. Jimmy, that's, that, that's, that's not. Um, so on the left, on the left-hand side, that'll, that'll show you what we're remediating. Planting appro- approximately twenty-three red oaks. Approximately, um, ten river birches. Four hemlocks. Thirty spruces. And those, actually those are not gonna be Norway spruces. They are going to be, I think, eastern spruces. If I'm not mistaken. Eleven giant green orbivitis. Four hollies and nine forsythias. The forsythias are an invasive species. If that is a problem, we could definitely change that. Of all those trees, that's the only one. The, uh, forsythias, where we're gonna be planting them will probably be around the building. They'll look nice when they flower. They're also gonna be a part of our protection on the people sitting on the deck. Um, so with all those being replanted, it comes out to about ninety-one trees. And we're actually, we only took out sixty. There were approximately eighteen that were already down and dangerous.
You guys wanna talk about what you've done with the, uh, the site plan in terms of the parking area? Where you are with compliance with the number of parking spaces, et cetera, et cetera?
Jimmy, um, the parking. Do you wanna, do you wanna handle that, Jimmy, or?
Yeah, so, uh, there's a couple, uh, Rob and I just sent you, uh, a couple of those via email. There you go. Uh, so there is a, an original option where we had, uh, I believe forty-nine spaces, uh, where we included, uh, a set, two spaces on the end here. Um, it was determined that it was just too tight of a turn to have a car on the end, so I believe it's down to forty-eight spaces with, uh, taking that one space out on the end. Uh, so that was the adjustment. We had, I believe, fifty spaces with, uh, another, excuse me, that we had, exactly like I mentioned, forty-nine. And then we moved, we moved the two spaces that were on the north side of the property, uh, to the main island there. But then doing that, it was too tight of a turn, so we took the one space out. So I believe there's forty-eight in total. Then you have the parking lot that, uh, offers about another sixty or so spots.
According to the code.
Excuse me, John?
So you're deficient by two parking spaces.
Correct.
The code requirements are, and you're suggesting that the, uh, commuter area on the service road will handle those, those two spaces, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. And then just, uh, you wanted to talk about where you are with the greens and tee box, uh, construction work, so on and so forth?
Uh, is, is Tommy on or, or Frank that wants to talk about the construction of the tee box and greens?
Yes, we, we've put into two essential layers for drainage. We have topsoil that, uh, has been put to the side of the greens and tee boxes that were stripped originally. And we have topsoil coming in. We have sod coming in that, uh, is coming from one of the best, uh, United States Golf Association. Todd Nursery, uh, sod nurseries from Long Island, Delia Sanzan. And then from Sussex, we have, uh, the rest of the sod, which would be the approaches and the surrounds. Um, one is a, a bent grass for the greens. They roll true. They're, they're predominantly certified for US Open and major events. They're the best of the best. And then the tee boxes are gonna be a low-cut Kentucky blue that, uh, has the type of root that could stand up to all kinds of play. Um, from a design standpoint, we've consulted with the Palmer, uh, people that everyone knows. Uh, Brandon Johnson, and then Wadsworth, not many people knows, the First Family Construction. And, uh, they came up, critique the property, wrote a report. And, uh, we have shared it, you know, at different times. Uh, we have also done a tremendous amount of landscaping. We put some scenic, uh, 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 tee boxes made of, uh, of, uh, stone that we had on the golf course and and they're, they're gonna be, uh, very, I, I mean, from, from an aesthetic standpoint, they'll be the best around. We can compare it to all the other golf courses that are around, if not better. I don't wanna say that we are the best, but we're putting forth, forth the effort to have be a, a real treasure and, uh, I don't know, what would you say, Tommy, or? Uh, I, I, you know, it's hard to, there's, I'm full of adjectives, but at this hour, I just, I just, this came off oxygen. So I have a little brain fog going on.
It's, it's, it's gonna look great.
But, uh, yeah.
Thanks, Frankie.
You're welcome.
Alright, anything else from the applicant?
Not this time, Rich.
Approval would be nice.
Has the applicant seen the tree commission's memo that was dated today?
Yes, it was disseminated to everyone that's involved.
And what is your response to their, uh, report?
Sean, you, you wanna?
Well, you know, I, I, I read the reporting. This is just a revitalization of a golf course. I don't understand what, what really the, the hassle is here. We're remediating everything we took out on the tree plant. We're putting back everything we took out. Um, I understand that they wanted a professional thing. We didn't do it, we didn't spend a lot of money doing it professionally, but I think what we did was enough for people to understand exactly what we're doing out there. Um, and the invasive species that they had that they mentioned in there on the list, yeah, they, they, what, the forsythias is invasive. If we, if we need to change it, we most certainly can change it. Um, the report that came out, obviously it wasn't that great, but we can work with it, and it's something that, you know, it's just ancillary things.
Yeah, we invited them to, uh, meet us on location, and, um, it seemed like we were working in the proper direction together. Uh, and then at the eleventh hour, they canceled, uh, the onsite visit and, uh, sent this memo. So it's very peculiar, uh, the course of action that, uh, they took.
Very interesting. Any questions from the board before we go to the public? Alright, Rob, we'll go to the public. Anybody from the public wish to speak?
Susan Segal.
Susan, you're on.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I hope to follow what, uh, previous applicant said about White Plains having your, um, meetings in public, and I hope that we can get back to that soon. Even though I know you may not, may like it this way.
No, it's, it seems much easier.
Okay, um, you know that I've spoken many times, you know, on this application, and each time I've spoken, I've said emphatically that I support the application, that I think that I look forward to this golf course, you know, o- opening up. I think it would be a great asset to Yorktown, even though I don't golf and I don't intend to. Okay, but that it should be done the right way, and it's no secret that there have been multiple problems with this application going back from, from day one. Uh, I just have to repeat or look in your minutes to comments I made last October about the problems. Basically, that work was being done on the site without any approved site plan and without any approved town permits. And a- at that time, um, even the conservation board chairman, who happened to be, you know, watching the meeting, said that the conservation board had never seen the application. So I thought in the eight months that have lapsed from October until now, some of these things would have been done, but apparently, um, that they just haven't. Um, I know everyone wants to see the golf course open yesterday. Uh, we're talking about, you know, Memorial Day opening. Uh, but we're not there yet, and I, I see at least two unresolved issues. Um, before you could even consider voting on an approval resolution, wetlands and trees. Let me talk about wetlands first because nobody is talking about wetlands. And it's been acknowledged that there are wetlands on the site. There's a stream, an important stream that has to be crossed. I think that after I had sent some, some memos to some of the people, uh, the, the issue turned up at your April meeting, April twelfth, and then on April thirteenth, it was on the town board agenda for a wetlands permit. And I think I heard them say that, well, because the planning board was dealing with the site plan, that the planning board would deal with the wetlands permit. I haven't heard a single word, or seen a single map shown on the screen about what I can't say what will be done in the wetlands and with the stream because I fear that it's already been done. So we're kind of what, what they say, ass backwards, you know, sort of a thing. So how can the planning board, how can the pu- public comment on the wetlands permit? When nothing has been presented as to what has been done and hasn't been done properly? How can the planning board issue a wetlands permit when I don't think you've seen one piece of paper dealing with the wetlands? Has it ever been referred to the conservation board? That's board number one to deal with, with the wetlands issue. Where, where is that? Um, the tree permit. Yes, I saw the memo that's, that's in the packet, and yes, as somebody mentioned, um, the tree commission finds it totally unacceptable. I'm not gonna go into the details of it. You have it all there. It's all in, in one page, but clearly some work has to be done. I don't think the planning board, um, should just totally ignore what the tree commission says. Clearly, this needs some additional review, some more discussions. It's not up to the tree commission to develop a mitigation plan. They basically react. It's the applicant's job, responsibility to do a plan, to hire the right people, and then tree conservation and als- tree conservation and also conservation board should be commenting, you know, on that. So, please, let, let's get this done before you, before you approve it, and I'd like to see it approved. But the job has to be done properly, um, so that the golf course can open. Um, frankly, the way things look now, it looks as if what this board, whatever you eventually do, is gonna be a rubber stamp because all of the work will have been done already. Which sort of makes a mockery out of this whole approval process, which has been a problem from day one. I know you've been trying to correct it, but the corrections have not been done properly. So please, get, let's talk about the wetlands. Let's get the tree permit. I think John is dealing with, with the parking plan. That's not a major concern, um, that I have. But I am concerned about the environment so that once the golf course opens, it's done properly, and it will be, it will last and be a wonderful asset for this whole community. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. John or Aaron, did we, I think Phyllis was gonna forward a, a memo from conservation. Did we hear, did we get that?
Uh, I did, I did not. I don't know if she emailed it to Robin yet, but.
I don't think it was for this project.
You guys should have received a SWIP at the very least.
Hi, guys. Can I just say that we have not seen the mitigation plan? It didn't come to us. Um, the last time I think we saw anything from par three was, uh, it was November fourth.
What, what mitigation plan?
What, the tree mitigation plan that was sent to the, um, tree commission, we have not seen.
Got it.
May, may I speak? May I ask, has conservation board ever seen the wet, plans for the wetlands?
The last thing we saw was, was given to us on November fourth. Um, I believe he wrote a memo at that point. I, and I believe, uh, it was taken off the next agenda, but that was last year, and so I don't remember everything. I'd have to go back and look at, um, notes after that. That's the last time I can see we have anything from par three.
And, and I just wanna point out, any any construction on this site involves the wetlands, and so as you're reviewing this, you are reviewing those impacts. Uh, it is, and, and it is a, uh, an existing site. So this is kind of a more, you know, like a cut and cover situation, for lack of a better term, which is, there's some uh, modifications to tee boxes and things of that nature that require, um, erosion and sediment control, um, measures. Um, to the extent that you feel you need to do longer-term protection of the stream, you could certainly, um, but anytime that you're looking at this plan, you know, you are reviewing by virtue of the, of this site, uh, those issues, part and parcel to any construction that's being considered on the site.
But may, may I just add that all the construction has taken place before the, before the planning board even started to look at, at the, the first iteration of the plan, and I don't remember any discussion about, about the stream crossings um, and what, what was being done. As I said, it was done backwards, okay? The work has been done, and it's probably mostly all done, and you still haven't gotten the permits. And I think this is a terrible example you are setting for private developers, okay? If the town can, can ignore its own codes when it chooses, what does this say to a developer? They'll just go ahead and do whatever they want, um, and then re- retroactively, the town will say, okay, we, here's your permit.
You know what I don't get? You know what I don't get? I don't get that this is a, a pre-existing golf course. We were revitalizing. Susan, it started back when you were the supervisor. You commissioned a property analysis from Ray Arnold. Have you read the report that you commissioned out? Basically, it was unsafe, unhealthy. Basically, it was unsafe, unhealthy for anybody to walk on that property.
Guys, 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 I don't want this to be a back and forth. Mr. Murphy, please. Thank you. So let's deal with just, all right, Susan, please, please, thank you. So I want to get my handle on the facts here. So we have a letter that came from the Tree Board today, right? And I think they out out do not want to accept the mitigation. I think that's a fact. We've heard from Phyllis Bach that the Conservation Board hasn't seen anything, it sounds like, from last year. Appears to be another fact. Step back in time, eight, 10 years ago, this was a golf course. I never played there. I'm not a golfer, but this is what I've been told. So if we have a development or a park and it's being redone, there are going to be impacts as you dig, as you remove things. It sounds like there was a report done by prior administrations to look to do just this. I think part of the problem here, as Mrs. Siegel has spelled out more than once, is that there's work ongoing without permits. So I'm not sure what's going on back and forth. I I don't work for the town. Obviously, as we said before, we're volunteers. But I know this has been going on prior to the Slater Administration. It's been going on for years. So I'm gonna look to our professionals, and I mean, don't no disrespect to anybody else out there right now. But I'm gonna be looking to John, Jim, and and Dan, who is now back with us and has a lot of intimate knowledge of the area. So John, what a- a- we've gotten an application in front of us, basically to revitalize a golf course that was deemed to be a hazard some years back. The town then went in there, it sounds like, and cleaned up the mess. After cleaning up the mess, they started to improve or re-improve or reinvigorate what they saw as the golf course. And as they got more into it, I would think like the mud hole, you know, as they did work over there. If you're doing work on a po- help me out here. What what is it that we need to do as a board approval wise? I mean, do we have to get something back in front of Conservation? Like the the mud hole or what they did out there go back? I I'm I'm not aware of all the details of it now. But for purposes of what we do, what are we missing here?
Well, we'll send it to Conservation since they haven't seen it. Um, I'm not sure why. I think that's the last piece, and then we can work with the Tree Commission to uh get them to have some sense of closure on the mitigation plan. Uh, you know, I ha- I have some ideas on that. You have to remember, this is really uh some a town project. Uh, we town owns the property and entered a license agreement with this these folks. So we are, as you can see with Jimmy Mar Dorano, very actively involved in it because we want to see it succeed, of course, on the town's behalf. Um, so we'll work to we'll we'll work to that end, two ends. I think that gives you some closure and gets you to a point where you can uh pass judge on this thing and and get the right permits uh issued. So I think that's where we're at. That's why we brought it back.
Okay, and I know, Jim, you inherited this too. I know you're trying to to do your work to get it cleaned up. All right, so we're in the middle of a public hearing right now. Obviously, we have a tree board issue. We have a Conservation Board issue. I I asked a question again. Is this something we just adjourn and keep open for now? Until we get those answers to us?
My suggestion is to keep, if I may, my suggestion is to keep it open and wait for Conservation.
Okay. Any of the board members have any questions?
Rich, I have just a a couple of comments. Um, first of all, yeah, thi- this is a a town, a call it a public-private kind of effort here, and I did play this golf course years ago. And, you know, there's renovation and there's restoration. This group, including the town of Yorktown, is trying to restore what was there. And I I think we're, this is a a case of where we're allowing ourselves, we need to be responsible and prudent, but we're getting in our own way here in so many different ways. Uh, I'm shocked to learn that Forsythia is an invasive species. Uh, I guess they are. You drive up and down 132, you see them everywhere. So, but having said that, there needs to be a little bit more forward leaning to coming up with the right answers and the right way forward. We're restoring a property to what it was previously. It's not a change of use. The stream is still gonna flow, and everything is gonna be fine. And I I think I'm I'm concerned that we're going in circles here. And when, you know, in reality, we should be much further along than I think we are. And to say that Conservation Board and others haven't seen it, I think I just heard that it was discussed in November, which, you know, in some ways isn't that long ago. But we seem to be pointing fingers here and we just, you know, this is a good project that is all about restoration. It's not about renovating. It's not about rebuilding or changing anything. So I'm I'm kind of shocked by that we're here tonight, uh unable to move forward. And um anything that we can do to kind of move it forward, I would uh I'd be in favor of.
Agreed.
And I'm in complete agreement with you, and frankly, I feel that we're we've become the middle person with this.
I mean, is it? I mean, don't I mean, I think Conservation Board and the Tree Committee, I think they all watch these meetings as well, but um let's get to the bottom of this. I mean, we're restoring a property to, it's gonna be better than it was. And that's that's progress with preservation, if you will. So I'm I'm just shocked that we're at this point.
As am I. I just want to remind you.
Oh, and just one quickly, one other thing.
I'm sorry.
I I really, I just, I really, and maybe I take it the wrong way, Ms. Siegel, but I don't like the term rubber stamp being utilized in context of this board. We don't do that.
A few.
I absolutely agree with that comment, Bob.
If the if the if the board rubber stamped it, this project would have been over two years ago.
All right, so let's let's get on with the facts and the matter here. All right, so do I have a motion to keep the hearing open so that the town uh led by John Tegger could get these these answers to us so we can move on?
Move to adjourn.
Whatever, first by Bach, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Garrigan. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. See you guys at the next meeting.
See you then.
Thank you. John, if if at any point we need to meet on site with the various boards, if that helps, by all means.
Yep, I'll uh try to pull everybody together in particular.
Thank you all. I hope we can get this moving.
Thanks for your time tonight. Thank you.
All right, do I have a mo- a motion to move from our regular portion of the meeting into the work session?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, first by La Scala, second by Garrigan. We are now in the the work session. First on the work session is the First Presbyterian Church of Yorktown. This is a discussion of lighting plan. Location is 2880 Crom pound Road. Do we have the applicant on?
Uh, yes, my name is Vinnie Wallace, and I'm here representing the church. And uh I have two other folks, uh Mark Malashevsky, who is on, and he is with our electrical uh contractor, and Dick Seymour, who is also another member of the church, is on as well.
Thank you for being here. Do you want to share your screen?
Sure. What do you need to see from me? Oh, this says host disabled attendee screen sharing. We need to uh somebody need to turn me on or something?
That would be Robin.
Okay.
She she looks like she's working on something there.
Got it.
So it looks like you're you're milling and paving the parking lot.
Yeah, the parking lot is the the, ah, here we go. Um, so the parking lot is all is existing, so there's no change in use there. Uh, what do you need to see from us? We have the um the lighting plan, which is what we're working on, and uh uh I can that I can the, so here is the, do I have that right? This is uh 132 at the top of the screen at the east side of our property. This here is the sanctuary. And uh what we want to light up, and if I maybe if I zoom in on this, it'll help. Um, so folks can sort of get the idea. This is, so this is 132 Old Yorktown Road. This is 202 here. And this is our existing parking lot, uh which we're, yeah, we are in the process of repaving. And we thought this would be the best time to put in the lights. Um, so these are the six lights that would be in the parking lot, and then there's four small lights, which are only a few feet high uh along the walkway that goes from the parking lot to the actual Sanctuary Church building.
Mr. Wallace, are there any lights out there now?
Um, currently, there is not on this parking lot. Uh, no, and what we have are sort of little like, uh, you know, you would have this little solar lights that we put up that are just in a stake in the ground, and they're only about a foot high uh along the walkway that that are sort of like you would put up up in your garden at your house.
Understood. So you're trying to keep the parishioners safe as they uh are are traversing to the church during the off light hours?
Exactly. So it's it's a and it's uh, yeah, so it's our congregation, and we do have a number of outside groups that use the building at night. Uh, the Boy Scouts meet there. Uh, we have an AA group that meets there on Friday nights and specifically uses that parking lot. Um, so really, we're just trying to put up some lights in the parking lot. And uh, and that's about it. So it's it's an existing parking lot. We're not, there's no real changes to the lot itself. It's just the lights.
Yeah, thi- this church is not brand new.
No, not at all.
It's actually very, very beautiful, very well maintained. So if if you can go to the, I saw the uh photometric.
Okay.
Can you go back to that for a sec?
Sure, let me go back to that, and I'll go back to sharing here. Sorry, I think I stopped sharing my screen, right?
Uh, let's go back to. Variance, is there anything you're looking for for height of these?
No, so really, what we have, we have the electrical permit from the town. We just want to make sure that we can put up the poles and we so I think this is what you were asking for, right? The lighting simulation? Okay, so that is essentially what it would look like, you know, from the sky lit up. And this is the photometric. So this is the, again, this is on the right here. This is 202, and this is 132. So that's the church building. And then the next one just sort of zooms in on that.
Okay. Can you zoom in even more so we can see some of the numbers?
Sure. Uh, sure, on my screen I can. Like that?
Yeah, a little more.
One more?
Yep, there you go.
So it's the six, it's, there we go, I'll just adjust it. So here's the, right, it's one, two, three, four, five, six. That's the six sort of lamp posts um ideas in the uh in the parking lot. And the idea is that there, we we didn't, obviously don't want it to spill over uh outside of the lot, but we didn't want dead spots within the lot.
Right, and so it looks as though you're nears at or near zero when you're moving off the property with any light, correct?
That's, yeah, that was uh, and Mark is also online if he wants to, uh, I believe he was just in the meeting. He is our our lighting design company, the electrical guys. Um, and yeah, that was the idea, that that we knew we couldn't spill over in outside the lot or outside of our property line. Um, so that's, it's designed with that in mind.
The only thing I didn't see was uh some catalog cuts on the heads and catalog catalog cuts on the bollards, so if you could provide us that, if you haven't already.
Uh, I'm not exactly sure what you mean. You mean, oh, you mean the exactly what lights?
Yeah, there's usually, th- they'll provide you with a sheet that gives you a description, their, you know, the specs, yeah.
If that's, I think that's what we got here, right? If I'm sharing the right screen now?
Well, I see that. That's some information on it, but the the manufacturer will be able to provide you with what's called a catalog cut, which will give.
Are they the same ones you submitted with the previous electrician? Sorry, John.
They're not.
Okay, that's why I took them out of the book, so.
No, I I have the catalog cut sheet so we can forward to you.
Yeah, that'll be great.
All right, so it looks like this, it's in compliance with the code. We need a we need some shop drawings. What are the next steps here, John?
Uh, just need to get the catalog cuts, then I think we can draft you up a resolution for next time.
Sound good, Vinnie?
Uh, that's fine. What we have right now, eh, what's going on is um, I stopped sharing my screen. That sounds great. Um, and so what we are working on the the trenching for our everything, and we have the electrical permit. We can go ahead and and lay the electrical and get that inspected. And then come back to you guys before we actually put up the lights. Can we work that way? Want to make sure we're doing this because we have all of our trenching and everything uh and.
You want to do it where you paved the lot?
Yeah, exactly.
No, I understand. Um, well, you have your electrical permit. Obviously, there's a risk with that. I I can't see there really being any issues. Um, pending everything's in compliance and nothing changes. But, you know, uh, obviously, you're at the point now that I saw them milling a lot today. So you're probably ready to start trenching and doing that other work. When are they planning on paving?
Uh, well, the trenching and the paving are going to be going on over the next uh the trenching, I think they were hoping to do tomorrow and get everything laid in and then get the electrical inspector back in there. And um the trenching is going to happen largely around the edge of where they are paving. So the paving can then go back in. Um, and then we need to get back in there with the electrical permit closed out before we can uh in the ground, then we can cover all that, right? And then uh then make sure that we're clear with you guys. But we really, over the next week, they want to be doing the paving and then the all the paving and such going on around the campus.
You're gonna be running conduit. Sorry, didn't mean to jump in.
No, that's exactly what we want to do, is run the conduit and get all that inspected and cleared.
Understood. Then you're gonna pull the wires later.
Exactly.
So I don't think this board has any issues with running conduit. Um, obviously, that's, you know, could be anything you do there, you could use the conduit. Um, so I would follow with John Tiger tomorrow morning. Uh, make sure you have those shop cuts, which I'm sure your electrician, I believe his name was Mark, could get to you very quickly. He's probably got one already.
She is, yeah, she is, I think, still in the meeting.
Yeah, I'm here.
Right, yeah.
There he is.
Yep, so, yep, Mark, did you want to get us something there?
Sorry, what was that?
Could you get the shop cut to John Tiger in the morning?
Absolutely, I have them. I can send them uh immediately. What is the email?
Yeah, we'd get them to Robin and John.
What is uh their contact info?
At Yorktown NY dot org. J, J T E G E D E R at Yorktown NY dot org.
Okay.
Vinnie, did you upset somebody in the room?
What's that?
Did you upset someone in your room? I thought I heard a dog crying.
We do. We have a new puppy that we just picked up Saturday. She's chiming in. She wants the, it's the public comment portion of the of the meeting.
All right, guys, so we have a plan ahead. Thank you for your time, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, and I'm gonna mispronounce this, I apologize. We have the McTaggart residence, Spano subdivision lot one. This is a discussion of the site plan. Location is 2241 Sawmill River Road.
Good evening. Paul Bertay representing the owner, uh, Mr. McTaggart, you got it right?
Not often.
So what I thought I would do is just take you to the original, um, not sure if I'm sha- sharing my screen yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Oh.
Got it?
Yeah.
You guys see the uh the house?
You guys see the, uh, the house, the, the, uh, proposed subdivision, okay. So what I want to do is just take you through the original subdivision from two thousand and two that was approved. And then I can kind of make some similarities, um, as to, uh, what we have today. So in two thousand and two, there was no sewer. Um, the sewer now travels along the south, um, and easterly boundary of the property. There used to be a design for an onsite septic in the, uh, westerly high portion of the site. Would it can be a pump system with sewer? Now that goes away and we have a new, um, footprint that we're proposing for this, um, single family lot in the R one forty zone. Um, the survey has been, uh, updated in two thousand and fifteen. Um, and we have had question regarding the elevations of the original span of subdivision versus the elevations that John Muldoon had on the survey that's before you. Um, and without trying to make it too difficult, I just wanted to make some similarities to show you that, that nothing has changed other than the datum that Muldoon used compared to what was used on the original survey. Um, here we have elevation eighty-six, uh, along the northerly, uh, property line. This is one oh-six, it's about a twenty-foot drop. On this sub-span of subdivision, we have, I kind of rotated to be the same. So we have an elevation of four oh-six on the bottom here and four twenty-six on the top. Similar, just again, I was just trying to make a similar, uh, correlation between the two surveys because I know that had come up, uh, previously. Um, so the other thing I wanted to do is to show you what the original house has, as it's shown here in this, uh, original subdivision. Um, I kind of plotted it on the, uh, proposed site plan. You can see this is about where they had squeezed this property in close to the buffer, um, so that the septic area could be, um, enough room could be allocated for the septic area. Um, now that we're able to have some flexibility, we pulled the house up a little bit higher on the lot. Um, did a quick calculation of limited disturbance from that original subdivision to this one. Originally, there was about a forty thousand square foot disturbance boundary. Now we got about a thirty thousand square foot disturbance boundary. So that's a, a positive with the removal of the, uh, septic onsite septic. Um, and the rest is pretty, I guess, straightforward in terms of what the, um, what the site plan, uh, is. We've mitigated the design flows for the pre and post. Um, we've got a, uh, kind of a short driveway here coming off of Katy Place. Um, and we've got a sewer service connecting to now the, uh, an approved sewer main, um, with water service, uh, with city town water service as well. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take you through it.
Any questions from the board? Anything, John?
Uh, I just want to ask Paul, did you? I appreciate you did the comparison between the two surveys and the different datum and so forth. Did you compare the first floor elevation and garage elevation from the old subdivision to the new? And are you able to compare them to see what the actual difference is? If any?
Yeah, we're a little bit higher. Um, the proposed elevation was, um, yeah, we're, we're about five feet higher in the proposed because we're able to slide the house up the, uh, up the hill. Um, I could give you an exact difference. I didn't get the exact difference, but I can, uh, I can follow that up in an email with you. I don't want to hold you to it.
That'll, that'll be fine. That'll be fine, yeah. Don't do it now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, John?
That, that was it.
Anything else from the board, any questions? Dan?
Just circle back to the thing, just do a complete review of the, um, stormwater. Uh, make sure there's nothing contrary with the original approval had, but, uh, otherwise I don't, I don't see any real issues here.
Okay, what's the next steps for us, John? We're on the info?
Well, we'll get, uh, the info that Dan just asked for and the, uh, we'll get a, a good sense of the change in first floor elevation and that we can move it to do a resolution, which you have to do because, uh, at the very least, the re, uh, floor elevation's changed by five feet, so.
Any questions, Paul?
Uh, no, uh, so if I get you the, I can, Dan, I can call you, um, or work with you offline in terms of the drainage design, um, to make sure you're comfortable with what we did to comply. And, um, if, uh, I can, John, I can get you that difference in the elevation tomorrow. Um, what would be the, uh, would, would it be possible to get a resolution for the next meeting?
Uh, that's up to Robin if we can get you on the agenda.
Okay.
We can certainly have the, we can certainly have the resolution drafted for that time.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Sounds like we got a plan.
Okay.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, take care.
You too. Okay, next we got the Kichwan Farm Solar Farm. This is a discussion of site plan and special use permit. Location is seven, one, six Kichwan Road. Do we have the app on?
Yes, I'm here.
I'm here.
Excellent. Okay, you're on.
I'm on Zoom call, can I call you back?
Oh, God, I'm sorry. No, I'm going.
Evening, everyone. Uh, so this is Julia.
Okay.
Love you.
Goji, uh, who is the, uh, developer and, uh, who also will be the long-term owner and operator of the solar farm that we are proposing at, uh, the Kichwan Farm. Uh, so this is a application for a two-megawatt AC community solar project. Um, it will be ground mounted. Uh, I can share my screen, I think, now.
That'll be great.
There you go, I was waiting for the permission to come through. Uh, all right, there we go. Um, yes, so as I was saying, this is a, uh, two-megawatt, uh, AC community solar project, um, that Egoji is developing for the Kichwan Farm. Uh, so to provide an overview, um, I will note, uh, some of these site plans look a little bit small. Um, it is a fairly large site, so I'm happy to go back to these and zoom in, uh, later on if the board has any questions. Uh, but just in terms of an overview, um, here is a property survey showing the existing conditions on the property there. You can see those, uh, the existing houses, um, barns, the greenhouses all outlined. Um, and the, uh, location of the solar array will be where the contour lines are noted, um, basically on the, uh, west side of this property. Um, and the, uh, site plan looks like this. Uh, so a few notes to make about this site plan, um, just to walk you through it briefly. On the, uh, southern side of the property, the array is set back approximately a hundred and twenty feet, uh, from the road. Uh, on the west and north side of the property, we are fifty feet setback from the property lines. Um, and I did want to note that this property is a little bit interesting in that it's composed of two parcels. So you will notice there is a property line running, uh, east-west through the middle of the property. It does actually run through the existing buildings, uh, onsite. So the, the property has been owned by Kichwan Farm. Um, they own both parcels, but I did want to note it is technically two separate parcels, um, running through the center of the property there. Um, on the northern side of the property, there is a relatively small wetlands area. Um, it was actually man-made, um, a number of years ago, uh, but it has now been designated as a wetland. It is relatively small. We don't believe, um, it's a jurisdictional wetland area. Um, however, we did leave a twenty-five-foot buffer around those wetlands, uh, just to be cognizant that that area is up there to the north. Um, to the south of the array, um, we will need to do some tree removal in that southern area, um, both to accommodate those southernmost modules and to prevent shading. Um, however, in our conversations with the Kichwan Farm, we have determined what we think is a really beneficial solution. Um, the Kichwan Farm has been looking for a way to expand their, uh, vegetable garden and they'll actually be using that cleared southern area, um, almost the entirety of it for new vegetable growing areas. Um, in addition, beneath the canopies, um, we will be planting a, uh, native meadow seed mix. Um, we did this with Egoji's, uh, first project actually at Longwood Botanical Gardens. Um, we have a trial going with eight different seed mixes to see which perform best underneath solar modules. Um, so we will be doing a similar, uh, thing here at Kichwan. We're also working, uh, with Cornell University, uh, with a, on a grant with them, um, to actually study vegetation and how it grows under these canopies. Um, so we think that's a, you know, really beneficial partnership and this will be a really great case study, uh, to do something like that. So we will be planting native seed mixes, uh, in between and underneath the arrays. Um, we've also discussed with the, uh, property owners, uh, the possibility of adding bird boxes. Um, there will be a fence around the array. Um, we have agreed that that should be permeable, wildlife-friendly fencing. Um, so relatively small animals, squirrels, rabbits, those sorts of things can actually get through that fencing. They won't be hindered from crossing the property, they'll be able to get under the arrays as well. Um, so they'll be able to go through there. Um, and finally, I did want to point out on the, uh, west side of this property. Uh, I know it's a little bit difficult to see, as I mentioned, I can show you some zoomed-in views later. Uh, but we will be running, uh, conduit underground up the west side of the property, uh, to connect to the transformer that is being installed for the solar array. Um, we actually had to convince Con Edison to allow us to do underground runs, uh, in that area. It is a little bit more expensive, but, uh, for the sake of avoiding the installation of poles and overhead lines, um, we thought it best to go underground. That, uh, entire conduit run will be underground on the west side. Um, and finally, just to reiterate, you know, we've been working very closely, uh, with Kichwan, the whole family that owns the farm there, um, to really develop a site plan that is to their benefit, um, that serves their purpose and will provide, you know, steady revenue to the farm, um, and also functions as community solar project. Um, we did present to the conservation board just last week, um, and we presented this tree inventory to them. Uh, so this was done by a, uh, New York certified arborist. Um, this was completed recently. Um, of note, in particular, the majority of the trees that are to be removed are located in that southern portion of the array near Kichwan Road. Um, we are leaving an approximately forty-foot deep, uh, row of trees along Kichwan Road, um, primarily for screening purposes. There's no need for us to remove those. Uh, but we are removing, you know, a fairly significant, uh, number of trees in that southern area. Um, at, you can see, you know, some of them are non-viable anyway, um, so dead, dying or diseased for whatever reason. Probably a benefit to remove those regardless, but there are some number that, um, would otherwise be viable, but will need to be removed. As I mentioned, though, of this area of trees being removed, only about half is actually where the solar modules will be going. The other approximately half will all be used for vegetable farming. Um, so that will all become vegetable gardens to the south there. Um, just to explain, the conservation board did raise this on Wednesday. Um, I do plan to bring this back to them as well. I didn't have this graphic with me at the time, but I thought it would be beneficial to present it here. Um, it's just an explanation, the trees, uh, to the south there are fairly tall, um, some of them are eighty feet. Um, and this is just to show you, our actual array location is about ninety feet away from the nearest tree. That means that the, uh, southernmost portion of the array will be shaded fairly significantly for about half of the year. Um, we've decided to do that anyway because ultimately with the system, the size, it is still beneficial to have the modules there. But if we were trying to avoid all shading, uh, we would need to be looking at this graphic about a hundred and seventy-four feet from the nearest tree, which would involve significantly more tree removal or a significantly smaller system size. That's sort of the trade-off that we've come to here. So we're, we're going with that middle ground array location of about ninety feet from the nearest, uh, tall tree. Um, all that being said, um, we do think that the, uh, significant environmental benefits of the solar array itself do somewhat outweigh, um, the trees that are being removed. So you can see, um, again, as prepared by our arborist, the, uh, number of trees that are being removed um, and the, uh, CO2 equivalent, uh, per year, um, that totals to about four, um, uh, tons per year. Um, the generation from the system will be, um, over three million kilowatt hours per year. Um, and that's the equivalent of about two thousand eight hundred tons of CO2 equivalent per year. Um, so the generation provides enormous benefits, orders of magnitude larger, um, than the tree removal, um, would be having in those years. Um, and in addition to that, you know, the lifetime of the system is about twenty-five years. Um, so you're looking at upwards of eighty million kilowatt hours over the entire system lifetime. And, uh, at the end, Egoji has, um, in our agreement with the Kichwan Farm, agreed that we will restore the land, um, to usable condition. It will either be equivalent to current or better condition when we restore it. Um, and we really pride ourselves on being, you know, good environmental stewards while we're occupying the land. So we do plan to restore this at the end, um, of its useful lifetime. Uh, and then, yes, wanted to present just a little bit, um, of what we're working through on landscaping. And I did want to note, this is a preliminary plan. Um, we are still in talks with our, uh, landscape architect about which parts of this we want to move forward with and which parts maybe not. Um, most of this landscaping plan was developed relying heavily on, um, the family, the property owner's feedback. Um, one note I will make, uh, for what I'm showing on the screen here, those, uh, trees that are noted on the west-hand side of the property along the new access road may not be planted. Um, we're still determining what's most appropriate there for the nearest neighbor to the west. Uh, and then I did want to note also, um, we had one of our surveyors take a walk, uh, on the trails on the nearby Kichwan Preserve, which is north of the property here. Uh, the only area where this array may be visible from the trails is through essentially the northeast corner of the array. Um, and we are thinking of planting trees, uh, which are not shown in this plan. Um, but we are thinking of planting some trees up in that northeast corner to supplant the vegetation that's already there and really provide that screening to make sure that it's not visible from the Kichwan Preserve, uh, trails. This is where we are with the landscaping. This, um, again, as I mentioned, is preliminary. We will certainly share a final plan and we'll take the board's feedback into account when we do so. Um, the other note that I wanted to make, uh, the property owner was kind enough to share this little mock-up with us of what he's thinking, um, in terms of, as I mentioned, the vegetable garden, uh, to that southern area. One note that I will make, um, having that native meadow seed mix under the panels, we think will actually be of benefit to the vegetables, uh, because you'll have more pollinators in the area, um, which helps with, uh, growing the vegetables and having that vegetable garden really flourish. So we think there's going to be some really great synergy there. Um, we're pretty excited about having that, uh, arrangement fall into place. Um, and finally, did want to reiterate, this is a community solar project. Um, given the size of the project, we are expecting anywhere from three hundred and thirty to four hundred and fifty subscribers. Those will be, uh, households and small businesses. We've, uh, partnered with Sustainable Westchester, so we plan to market the system, uh, first and foremost to Yorktown residents and businesses. Um, we want to really focus on low and middle-income subscribers, uh, small businesses that are hit hard from the pandemic. You know, those people who could really benefit from having community solar subscription and guaranteed electricity savings. So we aim to subscribe a hundred percent locally, Yorktown residents. Um, all subscribers are guaranteed a discount. Um, and in addition to these benefits, we also will be launching a public website. That website will have real-time energy generation data of the system. It will show the environmental benefits, uh, day-to-day and it'll show the generation day-to-day. And that's for anyone, not just the subscribers. So it'll be a really great tool, um, you know, for Yorktown to have generally. It can be used at schools to teach students about the benefits of solar. Um, it'll be a really great sort of public tool to have. Um, I did share contact information, I believe that was in our application, so I don't think I need to leave this up. Um, but yeah, happy to take any questions. As I mentioned, I can go back to any of those plans that I showed. Zoom in if there's any areas anyone wanted to, to focus on a little bit more. And, uh, that's it, thank you for hearing us.
Julie, I gotta tell you, of all the solar applications I think we've seen from a few years back to now, your application is the most detailed, well-thought-out. You provide all the information in there. You know, that one schematic you show with the tree in the year, the time of year with the lighting is the first time we've seen that. That would have answered probably a lot of questions on other applications for us. Very well put together presentation, really well done.
Thank you.
Board members, John, any comments, concerns?
Uh, just from my standpoint, um, appreciate all the work, appreciate the look from. the preserve, but you know, we'll just take a close look to make sure it's screened because that is the standard. And I did happen personally to drive by one up in, on Route fifty-five upstate a little bit, which was right on the road, no screening. And they're not, they're not the most pleasing things to look at. I know it screams out high technology and great green stuff to come, but they really have little aesthetic, you know, positives. So just got to make sure it's screened properly and hope to work with you on that, so.
And the fact that you got the landscape architect involved earlier, the tree count, not only did you do the tree count, but you included invasives and dead in there. Again, very impressed with that application. I wish everything was that thorough. Well done. Anybody else?
Quick question, Julia. What's the, I know you said this and it's in here. What's the acreage coverage of the panels?
Yes, so this, the site that we're occupying, I don't know the acreage of exactly within the module area, but I believe the site itself is about twelve acres. I can check and get you the exact size of the area.
See, so now this is an example of a farm becoming a farm, but this isn't restoration, right? So this is a little bit, but I have to agree with what everything that Rich said. I mean, it's either you've been watching and learning, but one of the most comprehensive presentations, taking into account all those things, the neighbors, the aesthetics and everything. So thank you.
Great, glad to hear it.
Comment, I had a couple of questions going into this discussion this evening and they were all covered or answered, so that was quite good.
It looks like Yorktown is becoming the solar land of New York State. You might have to get new signs for the entrance to Yorktown.
I mean, you all have a very great code in place, so I think, you know, you're also to be commended for your part in that you're attracting some of this development. I'm glad we're, you know, doing it in partnership in the way it was meant to be.
Our next application is another solar application. Look, they're coming fast and furious.
Also ours, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
By all means, Jim.
Julia, could you go back to the diagram showing the tree and how it impacts the panels?
That's a great diagram.
Now, had you given any thought to pruning as opposed to removal of those trees? And how pruning might at least keep a, for lack of a better term, a truncated version of the tree and still provide the carbon monoxide relief without impacting the panels?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. Our hesitancy, particularly in this location with considering pruning, is twofold. It's first that it adds fairly significantly to our maintenance costs over the years. So in wanting to be a good partner, knowing that we will operate the system for twenty-five years, that's certainly something for us to consider. And the second reason is actually that the area to the south where these trees are is actually fairly thick. It's overgrown, so actually the logistics of getting in there to do pruning might actually be very difficult. Our arborist even had difficulty in inventorying some of these trees and really getting into the thick of it. So we are concerned about that, you know, potential of pruning causing problems. So that's why we've actually gone with the removal route rather than, you know, suggesting to prune the trees.
Okay, could it, is it something you could consider for other portions of the site?
We could certainly look into it. As I mentioned, the majority of the tree removal is in that southern area. There's a handful of trees along the east side, I believe, that we've recommended for removal. But there's only a few. They don't account for the majority of these. But we could certainly look into it. It is always an option. But yeah, for those reasons, I think we would prefer to go with the tree removal. We just find it's cleaner and guarantees better maintenance long-term.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on reviewing the project, maybe set up a site visit at some point.
Sure, we'd be happy to help you coordinate that as well.
Work that to Rob. We missing anything, John?
I don't think so, not for the moment.
All right, great. Julia, well done. Great presentation. Have a good night.
I'll be right back.
Oh, that's so good. So next on the agenda is the Arcadia Farm Solar Farm. Got to come up a different way of putting that. Discussion of site plan, special use permit, location is thirteen hundred Baptist Church Road. You're on.
Yes, so me again. Let me share my screen on the other one. Yes, so for the Arcadia Farm project, this is actually a sort of phase two for us. We've already installed a rooftop system. I have Mike Tarzan is on the line as well from the Crown Energy Group. They helped us to install, they were the contractor who installed the rooftop system and we're working with them again to do the ground-mounted system. So the ground-mounted system for the Arcadia Farm is eight hundred kilowatts AC. I did want to note, from what I saw on the agenda, it looked like we had some discrepancy in system size. So the agenda, I think, says one point three megawatts. Just wanted to note, that's not correct. We're looking at about nine hundred ninety kilowatts DC and it's eight hundred AC. So did just want to make that note right at the outset here. And I will also note, the Arcadia Farm project is a little bit earlier than where we are with Kichwan in the sense that our tree inventory with the same arborist is actually ongoing. I'll explain a little bit more why that is. And we're also still working through a landscaping plan. So we'll certainly return to the board once we have those. But we thought it would be beneficial to at least share the site plan and provide, you know, an introduction to the project. So for where we are here, so this is existing conditions of the Arcadia Horse Farm. On the left side here, on the west side, is the barn where the solar on the rooftop is already installed. And on the eastern side is where the ground-mounted system will be installed. The site plan that we're working with at the moment looks like this. So as I mentioned, you know, this Google Earth image is a little bit old. That rooftop project is actually now covered in solar panels and this is what we're proposing for the ground mount. So a couple of notes on this layout here. The adjacent property on the east, on the west side rather, is owned by Arcadia as well. So both of those properties are owned by Arcadia. I do have another site plan showing the property lines a little bit more distinctly, so I'll share those in a minute. One note I will make is to the southern edge here of the property, between the fence and that property line is about ten feet. But you can see that between the fence, which is that light blue line and the array, there is more space as well as the trees on that southern property, which do provide some amount of screening. Again, I'm happy to talk more about that when I get into the tree landscaping plan. Similar to Kichwan, we are proposing to plant native meadow seed mix here. We will be using a permeable, wildlife-friendly fence. And the site plan was also developed very closely with Patricia Peckham, one of the property owners here at the Arcadia Horse Farm. We really wanted to balance their continued use of the farm, the riding arena, the paddocks with the installation of the solar, so we didn't want to limit their horse boarding operation at all, their riding operation. So we've really been working with them to design this closely. One note, which is, I think, great, is the area where the solar will be going. There are a couple of existing paddocks there. Any wood that is removed will be repurposed elsewhere on the farm. So we'll be leaving that for Patricia to use in her operations, however they see fit. And we did note, you know, we had a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the rooftop project. I believe it was even commented during that that this project is so far removed from Baptist Church Road that it's really not visible from the road. So I think you can sort of make it out. On the left, there's a tax map view. Baptist Church Road is all the way at the bottom of that and this array is fairly high up from that road. You actually have to go about a thousand feet up the driveway onto the property before you even reach this location. So it's really not visible when driving behind the road. We have a second site plan, a little bit clearer to see, just overlaid over the survey. And then here are the property lines. So on the left is the property where the solar will be installed. And then on the right, that is the southern nearest neighbor to the property. So just wanted to point that out. It did come up. We presented it to the conservation board on Wednesday. They did ask questions about that southern neighbor, so I did want to highlight where exactly that is located. In terms of environmental benefits, so we produced a similar calculation. So it's about one point three million kilowatt-hours of electricity generation per year for the system. That's the equivalent of about a thousand tons of carbon per year. As I mentioned, we have not yet completed the tree inventory at this location primarily because we previously were using a different site plan and layout that involved much more tree removal than the layout we have now. We weren't happy with that design. We changed it to this one, so we're actually redoing the tree inventory to match this new design. So we weren't quite ready to present those results. However, per the EPA greenhouse gas calculator, one, a thousand tons of carbon per year is the equivalent to the amount of carbon sequestered by over a thousand acres of forest in one year. So you can see sort of orders of magnitude is a very significant amount and we will provide that tree inventory as soon as we have it ready. And then finally, as I mentioned, we are working on a landscaping plan with our landscape architect. Particularly, we will be focusing on the west and north sides of the array. To the south, we believe the screening is actually fairly sufficient. Again, we would be happy to do a site visit if the board were interested in seeing that. And at the property owner's request, we're also proposing to plant fruit trees along the driveway, probably pear or apple trees. We do need to be careful with any planting here to avoid anything that may be poisonous to the horses. So we are working closely with her to identify what will work best. And finally, this is also a community solar project. Fun fact, the rooftop system at Arcadia was actually fully subscribed within a week of the project going live. So there's clearly the demand for it. We're expecting a ground mount to accommodate two hundred to two hundred and fifty subscribers. So it'll be another, you know, really great benefit to have this as an additional community solar farm on that same location. And I believe that is all. On this one, I do have my contact information as well as Michael Tarzan, who I mentioned from the Crown Energy Group. He is on the line. If you have technical questions, he may be better equipped to answer them than I am. But that is just the introduction to the Arcadia Horse Farm ground-mounted solar project.
Any questions on this one from the board?
I have two questions. The first question is, I just wonder, where are these panels manufactured?
So I believe the panels that we are using, although I cannot recall off the top of my head which we have allocated for these projects, many of them are manufactured in China. There are some American manufacturers who we are looking at, but we have not yet identified which ones we will be using for these projects. So I cannot say. We would provide those cut sheets though, once we've selected a panel.
And the second question is, in twenty-five years, when these have gone to their lifespan, what is the disposal process of getting rid of all of this?
Sure, so actually the panels that we use are silicon modules. So the components that can be recycled are recycled. That's particularly any aluminum components on the backing, any of the metal components in the wiring. Those can all be separated and recycled, as well as the glass itself can be separated and recycled. And then the wafers themselves, the silicon, is non-toxic. It's typically disposed of. But it is generally an environmentally friendly process and most of the pieces end up being recycled. And that's what we would plan to do at the end of the useful life.
Thank you.
Good question. Anyone else from the board?
Yes, I think these, this project and the one before it are excellent projects and very well suited to the land on which they're going to be located. I do note that a tree commission memo came in today. I think that needs to be reviewed and addressed. And it is certainly a supportive memo. It's not one that's opposing this project. It's just another part of the process that we should not neglect.
Absolutely.
Thank you for noting that. I don't think we've seen that, so I think.
Something tells me you'd be on top of it. All right, John, so we'll take the next steps on this one. Maybe we'll try to set some, maybe we could do the two site walks at the same time. If that works. I think they're pretty straightforward and we look forward to seeing more information. Thank you very much. Very well done.
Thank you.
You make our lives easy.
Oh, I'm glad we ended on a nice note here. Thank you.
Okay, we got one more item on the agenda. This is a town board referral. This is for the purchase of town-owned property located at Meadowcrest Court. John, I'm sure you're going to take the lead on this?
I, I will, if you'd like. So there is a fellow, if you look in your package, there is, hold on. There's an aerial and it shows Meadowcrest Court, which is essentially just a cul-de-sac, really has no, no throat or road to it for the most part. It was never built and there is a property outlined in red. And this fellow is proposing to buy that cul-de-sac from the town as it's never been used for its originally intended purposes. For some reason, those three homes, which is the one in red and the two to the south of it, have been orientated onto Fern, well, not the one in red, but the other two orientated to Fern Crest Drive, which left this singular house to fend for themselves possibly. We don't know the history of how this happened. But their driveway goes through part of the cul-de-sac. It used to cross a bit of its neighbor's property, but that was corrected a number of years ago. Fellow wants to buy the piece, relocate his driveway and improve it to his liking. The issue here for you guys is that since you, you guys are charged with laying out roads and also abandoning them. In particular, since this is a plat that was approved by you, you need to go through that process. You also need to create another lot line that would close Meadowcrest Court, that bulb of the cul-de-sac to create a line that closes Meadowcrest Drive. So really, we're doing, we need to do a plat here and get that filed if, if it moves forward. So I think you need to make a recommendation as to whether or not you think that this can be abandoned and sold off to private entity. And if the town board agrees, then you need to move forward before they sell it and actually make it a lot that can be separated from from the town road and, you know, be officially abandoned by the town and filed in the county.
Do you or Dan have any issues with this?
I don't particularly have issues. My, my concern is, and it really comes out to be mine, are you going to have a funny-shaped lot here? You know, if I had my druthers, I would, I would apportion pieces of this circle to all of the four surrounding members and make it a more regular lot, but I don't know that we'll be able to do that here, so.
That was actually going to be my suggestion as well.
Yeah, so.
You don't have all the parties in front of us to do that.
I know. That's why I said I don't think we'll be able to do it.
Any issues on your end, Dan?
No, actually, you know, as John pointed out, everybody's got frontage on other roads. But I don't know if the neighbors were aware that we were doing this, whether they would want to be participants and have us sort of allocate the cul-de-sac to all the abutters. Or some, you know, or some scenario where, you know, we have more regular-looking lots out there.
I think the neighbors should be certified in mail, you know.
It's a good idea. All right, we can do that. So I can respond to the, this initial referral if you authorize us to, to say that you believe that this should be abandoned and you can move forward after that. Or do you want to review it a little more?
Any objections from the board?
I think we should review it.
Yeah, we'll get those letters out and see what happens.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. We should know how much price they're going to. Yeah, definitely, definitely. We should know how much price they're gonna charge for it.
Okay.
You know, we don't want nothing on the board. We want everything on, tell us what you, you're gonna spend.
And we, and we also need to identify if there's any utilities there, if there's any water or sewer lines that, uh, we should grant ourselves an easement before we convey it. Likewise with the utilities, utilities may have something in there that, uh, should have an easement on it.
Good ideas.
Good point.
I can understand this is just for one property owner's convenience.
He wants to buy the property, yeah.
Yeah, so that's only, I mean, by law, he doesn't have to do it. He's not forced to do it. He just, just wants to, just wants to do it as, I mean, his own pocket, his own convenience.
He made the offer to the town, yeah.
Okay.
Dan, you think the fir- the first step on identifying any, uh, utilities is like a call-out? You know, the eight-one-one or whatever.
Yeah, we could do that or, you know, just, uh, a field visit. I mean, our, our water and utility, our water and sewer stuff is mapped out. So we should be able to determine that and then just a, uh, uh, actually probably do it with street view to see if there's any poles in there that, uh, belong to, uh, to Con Ed or or, or NISIG or, um, Verizon.
Okay.
John, can I just, uh, for Willie, just as a point of information, the, the whole thing started was because he was looking to get his, um, he saw it on the map, obviously, as the court. His driveway is basically the court, um, and was requesting for our highway department to plow and pave. But since it's not, not an actual court and it's the only driveway to his residence, it's his driveway. And so working with our highway superintendent, obviously he determined that it was not a, a public road. Um, and it was not fully developed as a public road. And so that led to the homeowner reaching out, requesting the ability to purchase the property, which then led to him and his, and his wife coming to the town board, which then led to it being referred to you because of the complicating factors, uh, involved in something like this. So I just want to make sure that we're clear as to it's not just that he showed up and said, hey, I want to buy it. There, there were other things that happened beforehand.
That makes me more in favor of it.
I think if you look at the street view, I mean, I walk by there all the, the time and I never even realized it, it looks like a driveway. I mean, it's, uh, I don't even see where the cul-de-sac is. I guess it's further up. But, uh, this is one of those things that makes perfect sense.
Okay. All right, so do the homework and we'll get it rolling.
Okay.
And that is it, ladies and gentlemen. Nancy, I know you're upset. Nancy had predicted ten thirty, eleven o'clock, even eleven thirty-one point. All right, guys, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion. Second.
Motion by LaScala, second by Bach. Calls in favor?
Aye.
All, have a good night.
Rich, now you're putting the pressure on me tomorrow. Thanks.